Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. And we have seven people in the room and it is 11 o'clock. So we are going to get started. And as I convene this meeting, I do want to take a vote. Ms. Darrenak Kofax and Ms. Marin have submitted written requests to virtually attend today's work session for medical reasons. All those in favor of Ms. Darrenak Kofax and Ms. Marin to virtually attend, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous with all those present in the room. So exciting times. This, I know many of us have had our two-on-twos to discuss the ESER work in each of our communities. And today Elaine and I have already met with Dr. Presidio, Ms. Petrich, Mr. Smith, Dr. Ivy, Lee Burden, and others. And so we are going to hand over the beginning of the meeting to Dr. Presidio so that he can present the presentation on the ESER funds.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and good morning, everybody. We're very happy to be here, have the opportunity to talk in more detail in a public forum about the great work that's happening across the division with ESER. And we know there's a lot of interest in this topic. We do have a community hearing coming up this Thursday. So we have a lot of speakers signed up for that as well, which is a great sign. So for today, what we wanted to do was really try to accomplish three major outcomes. First is just to provide some updates on the academics and wellness work that's been underway in the division so far this school year utilizing our ESER funds. We also want to provide some spending updates. We know that the board had a lot of questions about what the spending of the ESER funds has looked like over the course of the year so far. And then we're going to introduce our first of multiple accountability reports that our Office of Research and Strategic Improvement has helped us to develop. So I'm excited to be joined by Leedy Haruda, Lee Burden, and Dr. Petrich, who I think, as you know, is our Special Projects Administrator and is doing an amazing job supporting all of our schools in their ESER work. So to jump in, just a reminder about the purpose of our ESER funds, of course. We're very appreciative to have these funds from the federal government really targeted at making sure that schools can remain open safely throughout the pandemic, as well as, and more importantly really, focusing on supporting students' academic, social, emotional, and wellness needs. And the last time we met with the board, we discussed what some of the national studies were indicating the impact of the pandemic might be on student learning. And we didn't have our data at that time, but national studies were indicating a really significant impact that we would be able to predict as a result of the pandemic, predicting that students might only learn as much as 70% of what they would learn in a regular school year in language arts, as well as perhaps only 50% of what they might learn in a regular school year in mathematics. And now we actually do have our data and we can see that a lot of those predictions were pretty close to being on mark. So in the accompanying materials on Board Docs, there's a lengthy report that Orsi has provided that provides a lot more data. We know that board members have looked at the data of the schools in your regions or across the division. So this is just a high-level summary that I want to point out because it does look a little bit different than the data that you were most recently reviewing. And what you see summarized here is on the left side of the chart, we see the academic needs that our students have demonstrated. And it's important to note that when you look at this chart, this is all of our students in all grade levels, so K through 12. That's one reason it looks a little bit different than some of the data that you reviewed in your regional meetings. But you can see that 42% of our students have either a reading or a math need for additional support. So that means that those students are below level of where we would want them to be. You can follow that across and see that 29% of our students have a reading need, 34% for math, and 20% have a math and reading need that needs to be addressed. So significant percentages of our students that need additional supports. On the right-hand side of that chart, we see our wellness outcome data, again, from the beginning of the school year. 34% of our students really demonstrating a social-emotional attendance or behavior need. And as, again, you follow that across the right-hand side, you can see that 34% have that social-emotional need, 15% with an attendance need. And we see a small number with behavior. And that might be a little bit misrepresentative because we know from our conversations with principals and teachers and our observations in schools that there are a lot of behavioral challenges that staff and our schools are facing right now. But I think you see a low number in the data because there's not as many referrals that are being made. Staff are really working to teach those behaviors and provide supports to students as much as possible. So this is a challenge even though the data doesn't fully reflect it. One other thing as we move forward here that we wanted to share was just the timeline for the implementation of our plan. You'll remember we've been working on this for a long time. Starting back in the spring of 2021, we did a lot of community engagement. And there were opportunities for folks to submit written feedback as community members about how we should provide and use our funding, as well as focus groups that were held and a lot of opportunities for community input. We took that community input and used it to develop our plan, which the board approved in August, and then the state approved our plan in September. And in the fall then, we started working with our schools for them to develop their school-specific plans. And schools did a lot of work to look at their beginning-of-the-year data and identify the individual students who had the most needs, as well as looking at the strategies that would support those students. And one of the things that we did as after schools developed their plans is each of the region offices, as well as our ESER leadership team, Dr. Petrich in particular, reviewed every one of the 200 plans, gave schools feedback, and schools used that feedback to modify their plans. And then those plans were approved in the fall. Schools then received their initial funding to start to implement some of their activities that they had written into their plans. And here we are now in the spring, or late winter, I guess I should say, moving into the spring, looking again at providing additional revisions to the plans based on the work that schools have been doing over the course of the year. So this is really a continuous improvement cycle. Our division plan is not static. Our school plans are not static. And we'll talk a little bit about the timeline for implementing changes to those plans later in the presentation. A couple of things I really want to point out here and highlight for our community. First, all of our school plans will be posted on the FCPS website in full. So we posted what's called our Plan at a Glance, which was kind of an executive summary earlier in the fall. But we will be posting, hopefully by the end of this month, the entire plan with all of the spending categories and budget information that I know some members of the community requested. So that will be on our public website. And again, we will be continuing to monitor and revise our plans as necessary. So I wanted to just provide a few updates around academics next. And just remind everybody that we did obviously approve, the board did approve, a division plan based on a subset of evidence-based strategies that we wanted to see used in all of our schools. And we wanted to make sure, of course, that our investment is really tied to evidence-based strategies. So multi-tiered systems of support is one of the major components that we're emphasizing in our work. That essentially is a program and process by which we use data to identify trends and themes around student needs, as well as identify individual students who need targeted support at Tier 2 and Tier 3 levels of support. So we're working very hard to make sure that we have highly effective MTSS teams and processes in all of our schools. The other major components of our plan were extending learning time for students that needed additional academic supports and really trying to utilize different methodologies to do that. Of course, our summer extended learning program is one thing. We're going to continue our summer extended learning into this summer as well. But also looking at evidence-based strategies like high-dose tutoring, individual tutoring services for students who have those demonstrated academic needs. And then really monitoring students that are receiving those additional services to make sure that they're making sufficient progress and modifying those supports if they are not. And then lastly, on this slide, you'll see at the bottom, I just want to call everybody's attention to how we set up our accountability for our plan. So we're using those outcome measures of SOLs, other data metrics from other assessments, like our I-Ready assessment. But we're also looking at other measures, like are students making progress in their IEP goals? We're not just looking at those large-scale assessments. That's really important, I think, for everyone to understand. So since we developed that plan, we've completed a number of actions at the division level. We, of course, provided extensive updates to our Tier 1 curriculum. So we really modified all of our Tier 1 curriculum to make sure that it was accounting for those gaps that we saw in our Spring 2021 assessment data. Even though that assessment data was somewhat incomplete because not all students took it, it was a good indicator of where there were skill gaps. So we rewrote all of our Tier 1 curriculum to support that for our teachers, as well as providing updated resources and guidance around how to work with students in a Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention. So we provided curriculum materials to help with that, particularly looking at issues of differentiation and scaffolding for our English-language learners and our students with disabilities, who are two of our subgroups who have been impacted the most, of course, as you know, by the pandemic. Ongoing work that's in process now, one thing I want to call your attention to is that we are completing an RFP for a tutoring service for our students. I can't give you a lot of details about that right now because that process and the negotiations are still underway. But what I can say is potentially as early as today, if not today, later this week, we believe that we will have that contract completed. And when we do, we will be able to provide online virtual tutoring to any student who needs it in our school system. And we think that that's going to be a huge benefit for students and families to be able to have that access. So we're very, very excited about that. We're of course also-
Dr. Presidio, why don't you repeat that again so people can clearly hear that? It's a big, big news item.
It is a big news item, and it's not 100% completed yet, but we're very, very close. And the headline would be FCPS students, all FCPS students receive free tutoring services on demand. So very exciting to be able to offer that, hopefully, very, very soon. Additionally, I just wanted to point out, we're doing a lot of continuing professional development, of course, for our school-based teams. And as a reminder, one of the things that we did in our plans is we hired a lead support at each of our schools, part-time support. It's a release period for academic leads at all of our schools to really coordinate the services and supports with their administrative team. So we're always concerned, of course, about fidelity of implementation of our plans in a large system. So this was an investment that we made to really provide the capacity to ensure that schools' plans are aligned to the division's plan and the evidence-based strategies in the division plan. Now, probably more interesting to you is what's happening at the school level. Schools, of course, have already completed their plans. But as I said, those plans are in a continuous improvement cycle. But schools are really focused on building their capacity to provide effective MTSS practices and really target supports for the students that they have identified in Tier 2 and Tier 3. We're also consistently documenting the progress of all of our students who are receiving interventions in a centralized system, as well as monitoring the progress overall across the school and across all 200 of our schools. So switching next, well, actually, let me provide you, I apologize, a few examples of what that looks like in more detail. And we're going to have a video here in just a second so you can see it, but just a few examples of what that school-based academic work looks like. So obviously, additional opportunities for extended learning time for students who need that support. But a lot of family engagement activities. Our schools are doing a lot with family nights, connecting with families, supporting families in terms of how families can work with their students to build on what's happening in school during the day. And schools are also really doing a lot to enhance staff capacity. So there's a lot of staff training in highly effective intervention programs that we have not in the past had the capacity to provide the funding to be able to offer those learning opportunities. So Horton-Gillingham training that you might be familiar with for a lot of our schools for early literacy, Advantage Math Recovery Training, which is a very highly effective intervention program and practice for math support, as well as just highly effective professional development for best Tier 1 practices for teaching elementary mathematics. So a lot of really exciting training and professional development is happening. And when we high-level analyze how schools have spent their funds, you can see here that most of that money, of course, has gone to support for direct one-on-one or small-group services with students. So the vast majority of the funding is being spent on that hourly funding for staff to work directly with students. The next highest category is, of course, those instructional materials and supplies and professional development that I mentioned. So now we're going to shift gears and talk a little bit about wellness. And one of the major components of our wellness work is really around social-emotional learning. And I know that there's been, I think, some confusion in the larger community about what we mean when we talk about social-emotional learning. So I just wanted to kind of reemphasize that social-emotional learning is really about helping students to better understand their emotions, regulate their emotions in a learning environment, make responsible decisions, and really develop those skills that are going to enable them to be able to achieve success and reach their, their learning goals. So that's what we mean when we talk about social-emotional learning. And we know that a lot of our students during the pandemic, and even now, have experienced a lot of anxiety and stress. We've seen that, we've noticed that. And our teachers are working with students that have those, those challenges right now. So it's really, really important for us to make sure that we're addressing students' social-emotional needs so that they can be present for learning and make the academic progress that they need to make. And when we look at the research, the research is really very clear that there's a strong correlation between a student's social-emotional skills and abilities and their academic performance and achievement. So if we want to help our students be able to catch up and recover any lost learning, it's very critical that we attend to those social-emotional and wellness needs as well. So what does that look like? So what does that look like when we talk about our division plan? So at the division level, again, that MTSS framework is not just for academics. It's for social-emotional learning and supports as well, identifying those individual student needs and making sure that we're addressing them. And again, as I said, that strong link between social-emotional abilities and readiness to learn and academic performance. And one of the things that the research points out in the wellness category is that relationships matter. Student relationships with students matter, but a student's relationship with their teachers in the school environment is a critical factor for success. So we're doing a lot of work, as you'll see, to strengthen student-teacher relationships with some direct strategies like our advisory program, our responsive classroom, that we'll talk about here in just a second. So just a few quick highlights on the division plan. As we looked at with academics, at the division level, we, of course, have done a lot of work to update our curriculum materials, our Tier 1, our Tier 2, and our Tier 3 materials. And we developed a lot of supports, again, to develop those social-emotional skills. And we didn't just do that in a vacuum, right? We looked at what are the evidence-based best practices and what exists that we could bring into our existing curriculum. So one of the things that we've done is we've worked, for example, with the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence in the development of some of our materials. We worked with the Harvard Graduate School of Education that developed the Panorama Screener that we gave for the first time this year. So we really looked at, you know, what is, what are some of the leading research institutions doing around this work? And how could we partner with them? So a lot of ongoing work, of course, is still happening around professional development. This is still an emerging area for us. We haven't done as much work in social-emotional learning as we've done in academics. So we're still learning a lot with our partners. And we're still doing a lot of professional development and training at the school. One of the assets and resources, again, is we, similar to academics, hired a wellness lead for each of our schools to make sure that they could be coordinating supports with their administrative team around the wellness supports and interventions as well. At the school level, of course, as I mentioned, schools did complete the screener for students. And that, again, that Panorama screener was developed by the Harvard Graduate School of Education. And I know that we've had some community questions about that screener as well. And, you know, what's the point of the screener? And what is its, you know, what's it measuring? Really, the screener is just measuring students' abilities, again, their self-reported abilities and their sense of self-efficacy around recognizing and managing emotions and having the skills and strategies as well to be academically successful, as well as looking at their perceptions of the culture and the climate in the school and their relationships with teachers and administrators in the school. So again, that screener is aligned to what the research says about the need for social-emotional support and the link and the tie to academic performance. There's a lot of ongoing work, of course, in this area. One of the things I mentioned just a second ago is the work to develop those positive relationships between staff members, teachers, and students. So all of our schools have a structure, a formal structure in place where social-emotional learning and supports can happen. At the secondary level, we have our advisory periods. At the elementary level, we have different structures like responsive classroom, where we do things like morning meeting as one example. Many schools are using other programs like the Positivity Project to really focus on this work. And we'd be happy to talk about any of those in more detail as well. We're, of course, continuing professional development and then documenting students' progress in this area for students that are receiving additional supports. So what does it look like, again, in detail? I mentioned some of the things that schools are doing already with advisory, responsive classroom, but other things to mention, one of the programs that we're using in many of our schools is the Ruler Curriculum. And Ruler is just an acronym that stands for recognize, understand, label, express, and regulate emotions. So it's a, it's a way to really help students with those key social-emotional skills. And again, that was developed by the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. We're also doing a lot of parent development work here. Parents have expressed an interest in helping to understand, you know, how they can work with their students and talk to their students about anxiety and stress at home as well. And that's been, I think, one of the highlights of this work. So again, you can see when we talk about, you know, how does the funding really kind of organize in terms of the major spending categories? You can see that direct supports and services, again, is the major funding category that schools are investing in, as well as instructional materials and supplies and professional development. Very similar to how the spending sorted out on the academic side. Most of it being spent on staff, working directly with students or receiving training or purchasing materials to work directly with students. So we have a video, it's about five minutes. If, if we have the time, if you'd indulge us, what we did is we tried to collect some examples of what this actually looks like in some of our schools. The communications team did a great job on this. So if it's okay, we'll go ahead and play that now. I'm getting some thumbs up.
I think lots of kids are stressed out because it's still a pandemic. So families and people are still getting sick, and that might affect people emotionally and mentally. I personally missed a lot of learning during the pandemic and online. And I think Encore can fill in those gaps to help me now in my current classes. And it can build more support on my learning.
The goal of this program is to close some of the gaps that have been created in English and math due to the pandemic. The Flex lessons have exit tickets that are Google Forms at the end of each lesson. And so at the end of each Flex cycle, we take a look at all of the responses. You know, who is responding and who didn't respond? And why didn't they respond? And then, you know, whoever did respond, what they got wrong and what they got right. So then we know, like, okay, moving forward, we have to work on this skill a little bit more. It's going to take them a little bit more time to understand it.
So we did a little warm-up at the beginning of class to see which kids had a good grasp of adding fractions with unlike denominators. And then just did, like, literally did two quick questions. And the same kind of misconceptions were coming up over and over again. So we took those students who were just adding the numerator straight across and the denominator straight across and explored the concept with the fraction tiles so that they could see visually, physically, conceptually, what's happening when they are adding fractions.
So if a teacher notices that students are working on decomposing and composing numbers to 10, they can go into our math closet, get a kit that works on those structures to 10, and everything would be inside for them.
We wanted our teachers to have instructional materials at their fingertips in real time, turnaround time, whether that afternoon or the next day, to meet the instructional needs of students.
The thing I like about math games is that I get to work on my speaking skills and my math skills.
So one of the ways that we're using ESER funding here at Providence is we are hosting a brand-new program called PES Wellness Leaders. That is comprised of 5th and 6th grade leaders who all applied. And during these, this group, they come to me once a week, and we learn a new SEL topic, one topic per month. Then on the third week, after the students have done some learning and activities on their own, they then modify that learning to go and teach a younger buddy class in either kindergarten, first, second, or third grade.
We come to lower grades that obviously have not learned these kinds of things yet. And we teach them about, you know, what to do if you're really mad or really sad, or maybe a little bit of both.
This month, we're talking about growth and fixed mindset. Growth mindset is where you believe, like, you can do anything or you have room to improve, like, I can't do this yet. Like, you can always add "yet" to a sentence.
I play a lot of sports. And, you know, there's challenges that you don't really get everything first try. So whenever you do something wrong or mess up, you just gotta, you know, think to yourself that you can do better the next try.
So before, I was very, like, sad because I couldn't achieve goals. But now I feel like I can work it out and I can achieve it because I will be, because I'm a lot more patient and I will learn to take my time.
Sometimes I have a little trouble in subjects and I'm just like, I can't do this. But then I remember, like, what I've been learning these, this past month. And I'm just like, I can't do this yet. And it's just inspired me to keep on going and to, like, keep on getting better.
Making sure that my kids are not only physically healthy, but mentally and socially healthy as well is my favorite part of teaching.
Mindful Mondays where you can take, like, take a moment from your day and just breathe and relax and take all the worries and all the bad things of the day away.
So we are trying to create a system of sustainability and accessibility so that these grounding techniques are available to our students any time of day, or they're also available at home. And so that we are making sure we're building the bridge between our communities and our families and our students here so that our students and our families have complete access to all of these wellness techniques.
So I hope that helps bring kind of the teacher and student voice into the room a little bit. It's always hard to try to figure out how to do that here. But I think we saw some great examples in that video, particularly on the wellness side, you know, setting goals, having a growth mindset, really focusing on persistence. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about social-emotional learning. And you can see how that important, how important that is and how that ties to students' academic success. So the last piece that I wanted to share before we shift gears here a little bit is, again, just kind of the iterative cycle that we're going through with thinking about our ESER work. So we are in a continuous improvement cycle in this work. We started, of course, by looking at our data and developing our plan, both at the division level and at the school level. We, of course, distributed our funding and invested our funding in particular goals, strategies, and actions. And then we're supporting our schools and implementing those. And then finally, we're, of course, monitoring the, the response to those services and those interventions and adjusting our plans at the school level. Again, on a continuous cycle, schools, as I, as I mentioned in the opening, are in the process right now of making revisions to their plans and to their spending plans. That will close for this part of the continuous improvement cycle in March. But we'll do that again at the end of the school year, just like we'll do at the division level with our division plan. We'll continue to make those modifications and changes as needed. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of sense of kind of what the work around academics and wellness looks like. And we're going to shift next to some updates on our spending and provide you some details on our spending plan.
Good morning. I've never used this before.
Point it that way.
Okay. Okay. The ESER 3 spending plan. You all may recall from back last summer that the ESER 3 grant directs the division's spending is aligned in four major categories, unfinished learning- spending is aligned in four major categories: unfinished learning or learning loss, student academic and SEL wellness needs, prevention and mitigation, and then other uses of funds. We have about 40%, you may recall, that falls under unfinished learning or learning loss, about 47% that falls under student academic and social emotional mental health needs. So those two categories combined are the bulk of the allocations at about 87% or $165 million of the $188.8 million that we were allocated. The final ESER plan that was approved in August was developed based on priorities identified in a community engagement process. Recall, we had online feedback forms, focus groups, a public hearing, all those sorts of things to get the community engaged. We also conducted two-by-twos in July with school board members to get their priorities, and of course, the leadership team identified their needs through vetting the requests from the system-wide, basically. This basically displayed are the 29 projects that were approved on August 26. There is three years of spending with the ESER fund. About 52% are, will be spent in this very first year, about 42% in the second year, and then about 6% in the third year. You may also recall that we have about 52.5 positions that were funded because we've tried very hard not to create a cliff that's unsustainable in the future. So we tried to limit those as much as possible. 24.5 of those positions are filled and 28 are vacant, but they all are in the process of recruitment. So we should see those pretty soon. Overall, we spent about $22 million in this current year of the $97.4 million. That is about 22% of the total funding that was allocated in this year. You all may know that I belong to a national consortium of finance directors, and the fact that we've only spent about 20% of our funds is not unusual. We had, they did a little mini survey at our last meeting, and some divisions were reporting that only 10% of their funding had been spent in fiscal '22. So the spending, because of the need and the time needed to recruit, develop school plans, those kinds of things, there has been a delay nationwide regarding the spending patterns. I'm not going to go over all of these items unless there is interest in doing so. I will say that the intervention special education teacher contracts, you all remember that that moves special ed teacher contracts from 7.5 to eight hours, and of course, the spending as of February 9th only represents half because there's still six more months of payroll, essentially. And then the other two major categories, academic intervention and SEL intervention, those are largely school-based plans, and those are being implemented as we speak. And then finally, the last page represents the, an example of the spending narrative report. You may have noticed on Board Docs, there's a narrative document, and it basically gives you what was allocated, taken from the August 26 document, and a description of what those funds will be used for, and then an update as to where we stand in February. So that accompanying document will assist you in just seeing where we are with each project. Am I supposed to turn? And...
Okay, so good morning. I'm going to go ahead and start with our description of the purpose of ORC's first ESER accountability report. I'm sure you're all aware that you had asked for some accountability to make sure we had regular reporting that addressed both the accountability and the transparency for the community in terms of how the ESER III funds were being used by FCPS. And ORC's reporting is going to cover the majority of the funds over the time that we do it. It's going to be a series of reports, and the part that we'll be looking at is totals $124.4 million with $62.2 million allocated for this fiscal year in particular. The three things that the ESER reporting will cover are the allocations to schools to support student academic needs, the allocations to schools that support student wellness needs, and then the special education teachers' salary that Ms. Burden just described of raising the contracts from seven and a half hours to eight hours. So in terms of the reporting timeline, the first report is available now on Board Docs, and it examines the ESER III academic and wellness allocations to schools and how well those are aligned with the needs that were demonstrated by our students this year. So in other words, looking at the pots of money that I just described in terms of what was given to schools and allocated to schools, how well did FCPS divide that up in a way that matched the needs of the students that we have this year? Future analyses will take a look at some other things, and that includes the types of interventions and supports that are being provided with the ESER funds, student participation in these supports and interventions, any kind of improvements that we see from students in terms of their academics and wellness, the special ed teachers' perceptions of their work burden and their satisfaction with their work, as well as retention, and then finally looking at some return on investment in terms of the ESER III funds that have been invested in these three areas. The second ORC accountability report will be available in July 2022, and it will cover everything through the end of quarter three for this school year. So today, I'm just presenting some excerpts from the report. There's a full, I think it's 85 pages or so, report that's posted on Board Docs, so I'll be just touching on probably the most critical highlights that come out of that report. You'll see that all of the slides that I have have some report pages in the lower left, so if you want more information in relation to what's in the report, you can find it there. Now, in terms of what we were specifically looking at, we were looking to see whether the amount of the alignment that exists between the allocations that schools received this year and the observed needs that were demonstrated by our students. And that alignment can range from anywhere from 0% to 100%. FCPS did a pretty good job with the information that it had to allocate the funds. Remember, some of our information was incomplete from last year, and from the prior year, we didn't have much information about academics to base things on nor on wellness. And the ESER allocations to schools were moderately aligned to the observed academic needs and largely aligned to the observed wellness needs. In the left table, you see that the academic allocation was 43% aligned to the academic needs of students seen this year, which led to that categorization of moderate alignment. Now, the allocation formula for this school year was based both on the enrollment or the number of students at a school, as well as the forecast need based on prior performance and the proportion of students from some of our historically most challenged groups: our free and reduced meal students, students receiving special education services and students receiving ESOL services. The enrollment portion on the academic side was only aligned about 18%, while the needs-based portion that was provided was aligned at 55%. If you recall, there were two different parts that were used to fund and allocate with the formula this year. It was an enrollment portion and a needs-based portion. So in other words, the size of a school was not particularly related to the amount of academic needs seen in FCPS schools. Now, in the right table, you have similar information for the wellness allocation that was received by schools. Here, the overall allocation was largely aligned at 90% to the wellness needs, and the enrollment portion of the allocation was even better aligned at 93%, reflecting that wellness needs, which were largely about social emotional needs, were evenly spread out across all our students' groups. So in other words, whether students were or were not receiving free and reduced meals, whether they were or were not receiving special education services or ESOL services, they were relatively comparable in needing wellness supports, especially to help with those social emotional needs. Now, earlier in the presentation, Dr. Presidio had shown you what our students look like in terms of academic needs and wellness needs. Here, I'm showing it to you in a slightly different way to see what our schools are really having to help and support when it comes to student needs. So in this graphic, we take a look at what was the typical needs of students that are at schools and that are being supported this year. The one on the left, again, is the academic needs, and the one on the right is the wellness. Now, a majority of our FCPS schools have 30% or more students needing academic or wellness support this year, and in other words, roughly one out of three students at most of our schools are requiring support in academics or wellness. Specifically, the academic growth shows that overall in FCPS, 76% of schools have 30% or more students needing academic supports. All FCPS middle schools have this level of academic need in their students, 70% of our elementary schools, and then a lower 36% of our high schools. In wellness, which is shown in the right graph, 53% of FCPS schools have at least 30% of students with wellness needs. Here, middle and high schools demonstrate greater levels of need. All of our middle schools and all but one of our high schools have at least 30% of students needing wellness supports. Elementary schools demonstrate lower need with 35% having at least 30% of students with wellness needs. Clearly, this data indicates that the ESER allocations to schools to support both academic and wellness supports and interventions for students are very much needed. So that leads us to this highlighted recommendation from the report. Some adjustment of the ESER school allocation formula is warranted to improve the alignments, especially on the academic side. The recommendation is to adjust next year's ESER III allocation to decrease or eliminate the enrollment portion and weight based on the demonstrated needs at schools, especially for academic support. And the recommendation would move allocations away from the forecasted need-based portion that was used this year, which included consideration of demographics at the school toward the actual demonstrated need of students now that we've been able to identify students needing the various supports and interventions. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Presidio for the management response, and his full management response is available as the final appendix of the posted report.
All right. Thank you very much, Leedy. And as you can see, we definitely appreciate the great work that the ORC team did and the analysis on the alignment between, of course, the distribution of funds and student need. As Leedy said, I think one of the challenges of not getting that, I guess, right this first time around is we really did lack a lot of specific individual student need data. You'll remember, of course, there were assessments that we didn't give during the 2020-21 school year. We, of course, were virtual for half of that year. Some students were virtual for the entire year. State assessments were not required. Families could opt out. We had a large number of families opt out. And many of the assessments that we gave in a virtual format, we do not believe were reliable. So we had a lot of gaps in our data, and as a result, what we had to do is estimate student need the best way that we could do at the time, which was to really look at the demographics of the school. So we developed a funding formula based on student demographics largely that looked at student subgroups, so special education, ESOL students, students on free and reduced lunch in the school, as well as, of course, school size was another indicator that we looked at. And we made the assumption that larger schools were going to need larger shares of the funding. In some instances, that was true, but as you can see from the ORC report, in some instances, that was not true. So we definitely are going to work to develop a more targeted funding formula that really is based on the identified number of students in each school for next school year. So what we're planning to do at this point is to implement that new funding formula for the distribution of next school year's funds, but we probably will continue to allow schools to carry over funds from this year because many of those schools have already made plans and investments throughout the summer, and we do believe that we need to continue to try to honor those as much as possible. But for the next two funding cycles, we'll be working to update that funding formula to be more directly determinative based on the number of students identified as being in need. So lastly, I just wanted to point out again that, you know, there's a lot of ongoing work. This is a continuous improvement cycle. We're going to continue to partner with the community and with this board to make sure that our ESER strategies and our ESER spending is what the community would expect and demand. And with that, I just wanted to highlight two opportunities for community involvement. Of course, the first is the community hearing that we have on February 24th. If folks do not want to sign up to speak, they can still submit written comments through March 4th. So we have an opportunity for individuals to submit written comments as well. And then just lastly, we will be posting by the end of this month, in full transparency, all of the school-based plans with all of the budget information for each of those plans. So with that, I apologize. It went a little bit longer perhaps than we had anticipated, but we'll turn it back over to Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Tolan for a board discussion.
Thank you. Dr. Breber, and you're waving. Does that mean you would like to say something before we go to board member comments?
Just briefly, I'm just so proud of this ESER team, working across departments, the entire presentation. It is a historic opportunity to receive this money. We take it seriously, our commitment to the kids. And if I could, just real time to set two things, real time, the county executive is presenting at the Board of Supervisors his budget, which fully funds the superintendent's proposed budget. I wanted you all to know that. And also, real time today in news clips, Forbes, Forbes has said Fairfax County is one of the top large companies in America to work for and the only educational institution or school district in Virginia to receive that designation. So I'm just very, very proud of the school system today, and I know you all are as board members as well. So just thank you very much and look forward to the discussion on ESER.
Super. Thank you, Dr. Presidio, and both of those are good news on both fronts. We do have a number of board members who would like to comment on this presentation and ask questions. Our first one up is Ms. Omeish.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, Dr. Petrich, for your great work on ESER and your leadership, and of course, everyone for your contributions. For clarification, I just, Ms. Ruda, is the ORC analysis responsive to the suggestion made in the audit work session? Is this where this came from? She might not know that. I don't know who directed her.
Ms. Omeish, we did a follow-on on the ESER last summer that asked for a monitoring of this, so I think that's what, how that came about.
Okay, so in terms of the accountability, because I want to think there's compliance and effectiveness, and I know we had that conversation about audit potentially doing compliance. I assume, right? McGlocklin's nodding. I remember that was a conversation that came out of our work session. Is there an update on whether those are being distinguished or not or where we are with that?
Well, maybe Leedy could go through the scope of what her accountability report is going to cover, and Ms. Ko is here as well. She might have some comments from an audit perspective.
So I'm just trying to find the slide. Maybe we could go back to slide, I think it's 27, that covers the specifics on what the accountability. So we talked about the three different areas, but this goes into kind of the questions that will be tried, we're trying to answer. This first one was really around that alignment of the allocations to the needs of our students. But the future analyses will get more into the effectiveness area and are going to look at, first, the types of interventions and supports. We want to make sure that we're checking in on whether students are participating in them and then look at the kind of student outcomes that we're seeing. So what are the improvements we're seeing in students' academics and wellness, which will get at the effectiveness of what FCPS is doing? The part about special ed teachers is also getting about effectiveness for just that part that has to do with the special ed contracts. And then the ROI piece that will look at the investment of the money in relation to what we're getting back, we'll also look at effectiveness as well.
Good afternoon. So I would like to respond to a broad questions about what audit, kind of like the scope of work for the ESER spending. So it is as part of the current year audit plan that we will looking at it through the continuous monitoring lens. So for audit, we normally come in after the spending has been made. So as Ms. Burden mentioned, that I think we spent roughly $20 million, so we are now like looking at those expenditures for compliance purpose, and once we are completed with that, we will bring it back to the audit committee to report and then to the school board for the result as well.
Is that something that can be looped into the iterative process? Is it at all at this point?
So, so for audit, we are looking at the sample, on a sampling basis, for the expenditures, and we can look forward, like, in the upcoming, like, after we have completed with the financial And we can look forward, like in the upcoming, like after we have completed with the first piece of work, and we can look at if there are a lot of outliers or like what the result look like, and then we can look at modifying it, you know, to target at kind of potentially problem areas. Our check, though, is more focused on compliance, like Ms. Omeish, you mentioned, and for Leedy's team is more, and also Sloan team is more looking at the program, like the effectiveness, right? Like, are we saying what we have done and has that been achieved? For the program effectiveness, that will be the teams to handle.
Right. No, absolutely. And I think that's what I'm trying to say. I think it would be beneficial to have as part of that, yeah, to bring together the efforts, to have it as part of the iterative process to inform how we move forward.
Oh, yeah. I think you're perhaps suggesting that we include in our next report to the board part of Ms. Ko's audit findings. So, yeah, we could definitely see if we could work together to be on a reporting cycle to be able to do that.
Great. Thank you. I did want to also just clarify, Dr. Presidio, in the iterative process, how many rounds of revision over what period of time we'll be having?
And for all of these questions, I'm just going to remind Dr. Petrich that she needs to correct me when I say something wrong, and she needs to...
Or it could be her. I didn't mean to direct it. Yeah.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm mostly joking, but she really is our expert, and I definitely want her to be able to weigh in on some of these things. I don't think we've determined necessarily a particular number of revisions. I think partly it's going to even be dependent on, and differentiated by school in terms of the adjustments that they might need to make based on how students are responding to the services that they're receiving. This year, we've set up a cycle that we knew that we were going to have to revise all of the plans in February and March because we had a limited dispersment of the funds, and we knew that we were going to be providing additional funding later in the school year, which would require schools to actually be able to update, or would require schools to need to update their plans. So we planned for a winter revision for all of our schools this year. I think next year is probably going to be more individual school-dependent and differentiated by school.
And if I could add to that response, we do have what we call an interim adjustment process in between the formal windows. So while Dr. Presidio mentioned the two formal windows, the one at the beginning of the year, which we call fall, and the current one that we're in, we have an interim adjustment cycle to support schools so that their ability to implement their plan doesn't wait solely for the revision window.
Yeah. So I guess on Ms. Ruda, on your end, what's your understanding of how often you'll be also looking at effectiveness?
So we plan to look at effectiveness at least once a year. It really comes down to whether we have available information. So right now, we project not having any kind of effectiveness information until at least the third quarter. So that's when we would start looking at it, but that we would, as we're producing the reports, we probably would be looking also at the end-of-year information and provide that as well at some point. But a minimum of once a year, but it would really depend on how often we have the effectiveness or the outcome information for students, and we expect that to probably be one to two times a year where we can really take an in-depth look at it. Separate from, we would also be looking at students coming in, as we did this time, on where students are at the beginning of the year, which we don't see as effectiveness, but would also give us a sense of how well students are doing overall.
And then, maybe this is Ms. Burden, but based on what you shared, the expected delay, right, that we're in in terms of using funds, how long do we expect us to be managing these funds? Up to what point will they be used?
Well, the fiscal '22 funds that are allocated out to the schools and departments will automatically carry over at year-end, just like regular grant funds do in any given year. What was your second question?
Up till what point will we be managing these funds?
Till September of '24. September 30th of '24 is when the grant runs out.
Ms. Omeish, there is some advocacy across school districts across the country to look at lengthening that time. We have met with Congressman Connolly, the Prince William Superintendent and I, and are in some discussions about what he can do to help lengthen that time, because we do see this as a multi-year process, and we'll have updates when we can share them with the board. So, but right now, we've got two more years, but we want to be sure we're spending the money well. We want to be sure we're spending the money effectively, and we want to be sure we're thinking that some of this is just not a short-term fix. It's not going to be snap our fingers and all these kids are miraculously in a different place academically or socially emotionally. This is about consistent, over-time interventions that really get kids where they need to be.
I could just add one little bit to that. I mean, and Dr. Braybrand said it really well, we want to make sure that we're really investing this money wisely. You know, you look at how some other divisions are spending money. Some of them are doing a really good job and investing in things that are similar to our plan. Others are buying a lot of equipment, you know, technology purchases. Those things are not sustainable either. So we want to make sure that this money is invested really well. It is going to take several years, we believe, for students to be able to, you know, recover some of the gaps that they have right now. But one thing I do want to say about the amount of money, just to keep it in perspective, this is a historic investment of federal dollars in public education, and it's a relatively small amount when you compare it to our overall operating budget. So we're excited to have the money, but when you look at on an annual basis, as a percentage of our operating budget, it's less than 2%. So it's a relatively small amount of money, and because it's small, even though the dollar sign is large, we have to invest it really well and be very intentional and strategic about how we use the money. So having a little bit more time for schools to spend it would be a good thing if we get that authorization.
Yeah. Small, but relative to fixed expenses is significant, right? Or am I misjudging that?
I'm not saying it's insignificant. It's just sometimes in the community conversation, we hear about this large historic investment in public education. It is, and yet it is still small. So I just think, I know board members here advocate a lot for greater investments in federal funding, and we need to continue to do so because this one-time infusion of money is really not going to solve all of the problems and challenges that our schools and students face.
Oh, no doubt. Appreciate the context. So then, is it possible, if we're doing an annual review, to do it a little bit more frequently? What are some of the barriers to that, Dr. Petrich, maybe, since it would have been annual otherwise, right? If it's only up to '24?
So perhaps one of the biggest challenges is the time it takes for schools to revise their plans and for regions and the ESER team to review, provide feedback. You almost have to compress that window in order to upload budgets efficiently. Otherwise, there could be that time in which it's, you're not able to upload budgets for schools to make the purchases or the investments that they need. So getting the teams, the school plans, as well as the teams to review and approve, does take three to four weeks. We've been able to create some efficiencies since the fall cycle, but still, that's likely a month out of the year, so that iterative cycle does take time.
And I would just add, I think one other thing is, we don't want to revise plans just to revise them and slow things down. If the plan has received approval, and if the data is showing an impact, then we want the schools to continue with those strategies. Where we want to be able to make adjustments is if the data doesn't show improvement, or if the school is signaling that they need to make changes in their plan for a variety of other reasons, then we want to be able to do that. And that's why I'm saying, I think, moving forward, we're going to be on a more differentiated kind of school-by-school basis.
And Ms. Omeish, a final nugget. This first year, just to pull us back in time, we were hoping to have all the plans completed in August, and something called the Delta variant hit us. Our principals begged for more time to submit the plans, so we did provide additional time and flexibility for those SIP deadlines. This coming year, we're already working on a much more aggressive timeline for schools to have those plans done before the first day of school. So that is a huge difference in this very first year. When ASU was opening, we saw the Delta variant, and again, I don't want to put us back through that memory, but it was a significant impact to our principals going, we're not in a place to get these plans developed to the level of excellence that we know the board and community and we want. And so we are going to have deadlines for this coming year that are going to ask schools to have that completed before the school year starts. And I think that's going to be also very helpful to get the cycle more frequent.
Because ORC's next report comes out in July, right? That's what I saw, right? So will that be incorporated? I'm trying to avoid that we have a lag, right? Now we have data telling us we should have spent the money a certain way, and we've already decided how to spend that money. We're going to get some data in July that tells us ROI, because I mean, I'm inclined, even when I see this, to say, eh, I don't know, I'd invest more in direct services. But everyone has their perspective on that, right? But we'll know from the data, I'm assuming, planning will start after July.
The schools won't have to submit, we're hoping, probably, again, I'm not making news today, probably the end of August, that would be our ideal. They'd have the ORC report in July. Summer is when we can do the kind of collaborative planning and strategic plan review that we want to do with schools. This past summer, it got caught up in other pandemic stuff, barring that the pandemic, we're in the late stages, moving from pandemic to endemic. Our teams are going to get to have the deeper dive on that, and they'll have the ORC report in July to be able to inform their final thinking before they submit in August.
Yeah. And they'll have an updated funding formula, as was referenced in the ORC report. So that will be adjusted for next school year's plan as well.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect segue, actually. I know last time when we talked about, you know, making sure services are school-based, making sure that they're focused on academics and well-being. Mr. Graham Felder, you told me that it would be determined by need. Now we're seeing that, kind of, I think the flashing light, biggest takeaway from today is, we need to go back to need-based, right? I think that of all these documents, it's Ms. Ruda's main recommendation. So was that formula not used for the previous allocations?
So the formula was used. Some of the issues in, like on the academic side, Dr. Presidio and I both talked about how we didn't necessarily have complete data. So we had the 2021 data. We didn't have any data from the prior year in terms of SOLs, and then we had some 2019 data. But if you recall from information about academics, the 2019 data, which was used as part of the formula, indicated smaller gaps than currently exist because there was an expansion of gaps during the pandemic years, right? So that was a little bit, throwing the formula off a little bit for that reason. The needs-based also included, both on the academic and the wellness side, percentages of our FRM students, our special ed, and our English learner students. That worked well to compensate on the academic side of it, but actually on the wellness side, it wasn't working quite as well because we didn't see as much distinguishing of those wellness needs for students in different subgroups. So it kind of worked in different ways, and really, if you just come down to it, now that we have the data on wellness, and I'll also say, this looked at wellness mid-year. Some of the behavioral data may change over time, some of the attendance data. So data at the end of the year in these three areas that show the demonstrated needs of our students at schools will be the best data to use moving forward to really deal with the needs that we're seeing, because they are likely to continue on for multiple years.
Okay. We were using a needs-based formula, but the data we were plugging into that needs-based formula didn't reflect need, right? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. So moving from here, my time is going to end in a sec. I'm encouraged by Appendix H where we answered that question, but it was a little bit of a dodge. So I just want to hear from staff, is there a commitment to be adopting this recommendation? Is that the direction we're moving?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
Unequivocally.
Thank you. Go back, please.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Dr. Anderson?
Pretty much, I can pick up right from there, because that's where the majority of my questions are as well. If you remember, Dr. Braybrand, I was adamant for us to make sure we had needs-based allotments. And I recall at the beginning, the first 20% were just provided to schools, and the final 80% were supposed to be needs-based. You spoke about this a little bit, but I'm looking for a high level of specificity in terms of what is that formula that we did use to allocate those 80%? You mentioned school size, you mentioned demographics. Can you give me the most specific information possible on that?
Well, Dr. Petrich is trying to bring the formula up right now, so once she locates that, we'll answer that question for you.
Okay. So then I will pause and come back to that when she has it. I want to go back to kind of the overall plan in terms of all of the work that's been articulated in here, all of the work that I know is available in the at-a-glance and the full plans that schools have uploaded. You know, as a parent of two kids, one in elementary, one in middle, I was very excited to see the reports that came home. I believe there were November, December, there were reports of the screeners, there were reports of, there were multiple reports. For my one daughter, I think I had three or four different sheets. But what I did not get is what the heck is going to happen with that information, because our typical parents are not going to go look up these at-a-glances. But I think there's been a gap in communication in terms of, this is your child's profile. What are we going to do about it? And the person whom, you know, elementary parents primarily mostly trust is that classroom teacher. There's been zero communication that I can point to that's going to discuss with parents which one of these wonderful interventions that have been articulated today will be applied to their children. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. No, I'd be happy to do that. And, you know, there is some difference across schools, so we do definitely always encourage families with questions to contact the teacher and contact the principal to find out more specifics for that particular context. But what we can generalize across all of our schools is that when schools receive that data, they look at the data and they identify a couple different things. They look at trends. So what are the types of services and supports that students need? And they look at individual students that might fall into that Tier 2 or Tier 3 need for intensive additional support. So at Tier 1, looking at the trend data, you see schools doing some of the things that we saw in the video earlier, right? Working to create environments in the entire classroom. So you saw that whole group classroom where they were doing some mindfulness activities and some stress reduction activities with students to help them, because they'd identified that as an area that they needed to work on with all of their students. They're utilizing some of the programs that I talked about. Some schools are using Ruler, some schools are using, you know, Positivity Project, for example, and incorporating those things into their Tier 1 classroom structures, right? So into their morning meetings, into their closure activities for the day at the elementary level, into their advisory programs at the secondary level. And then, when we get into the Tier 2 and the Tier 3 supports, you saw a little bit of that in the video as well. You know, staff members working with a small group of students on a particular area or a particular skill or support that students might need. So that's to generalize what it looks like, but again, you know, I think for this very specific, we would always encourage folks to talk directly to the classroom teacher and the principal to see exactly what they're using and exactly what that looks like in that particular school.
I appreciate that, but I also think that also puts the onus on the parents to initiate the conversation. I guess my question is, what is the expectation on the part of the division in terms of the communication that schools are going to have with parents to say, this is what this report means?
You know, I think it's a great question, and I certainly wasn't trying to shift any responsibility. That was, you know, if a parent has concerns or questions, I'm saying that's where that individual should go. But I do think a lot of our schools have done a good job, again, communicating in writing about some of the things that are happening in their school, but also holding those parent workshops. Most of our schools have done after-school activities, evening activities, where they invite parents in to learn more about what they're doing for their academic supports and their social-emotional supports, and to provide parents with things that they can do with their students as well. So that's the primary connection, I think.
And I think that's the piece that I'm speaking to. I am not seeing that as intentional or as consistent as you are describing.
Okay.
So I would like to see what efforts can we put towards that?
We can take that feedback and look at it and see. I know we have had principals wanting to be very proactive in communicating your hearing, maybe not as much, so we'll take it back and we can do that as an update. I will say this, too. Let's just be honest, we never had a social-emotional screener in Fairfax County ever. This is the first time historically that we're doing a screener. And you know what? Some people want to call it SEL. You know what it is? This is life skills. We've gone through two years of a pandemic, and we're teaching our kids life skills, resilience, grit, to be successful. And so some of these new assessments are new. It's new to educators, it's new to parents, and we do need to get the message out, what we're doing, and make parents know, there's nothing to be afraid of here. We are training your kids to be successful in the 21st century with life skills that are more important than ever. EQ is just as important as IQ for the future. That's what Portrait of a Graduate is. And so we'll work on doing some additional follow-up on this critical question, Dr. Anderson, so that our principals have... so that our principals have, make sure they have been doing it. And maybe there's some additional things at the county level we can do, some frequently asked questions, particularly around the SEL screener, that can take some of the rumors away and really understand how this is an effective part of making sure our kids are ready to succeed every day.
Absolutely. And while we wait for that information to come, I want to kind of dive into some of the data a little bit. When I reviewed my region's data, my schools were by far and large way more acutely in trouble than the division average. You know, we have places where for I-Ready, for example, the division average is 61%. I have schools at 89%, 91%, 70%, 82%, just way above. And we have a couple of these schools that are targeted by Mr. Greenfelder's office for intensive work. But I think my question is, what are we doing to address those schools that are such outliers in the data? Because that just cannot be what the school is just left to their own accord to handle when the bulk of their kids are in this position. So I'd like to hear what is happening for those schools that are not close to that average but are way beyond it, but not meeting enough, not meeting the criteria to be supported by Mark Greenfelder's office?
Well, I'll certainly let other folks weigh in. Mark might have some comments, Noel might have some comments as well. But we are targeting our supports based on the schools that do have the greatest demonstrated need. And one of the things that we have done or also in the process of doing is increasing our capacity to provide some of those supports. So we've hired some additional resource teachers to be able to provide targeted supports around the MTSS processes and practices. And we're hiring some additional resource teachers to really provide some additional support in math as well because those are big areas. And we're looking at the data, just as you mentioned, to really target the schools that have the greatest amount of need. So I don't know if Mark or Noel want to add anything to that, but that would be the.
Yeah, and before they do, just a reminder for the board and the public, right before the pandemic, Dr. Duran brought me a series of recommendations and we shared with you. We shifted our Title 1 cut, which was among the lowest in the country, to giving assistance at 35% free reduced lunch, up to 55%, which meant more resources to higher-poverty schools. We also had our first middle school become Title 1 PO, and that provided additional resources to that school there. And so higher-need schools are receiving more Title 1 in our formula distribution than they ever did before until two years ago.
So your question is an excellent one. And actually, I came, I just left a meeting this morning where we had a retreat with our executive principals for school improvement and our leadership for Project Momentum to discuss exactly the question that you just asked. And so in the transition, right before the pandemic hit, when we did expand to much more of a region model, which is the region teams, it did take some of the emphasis off of the specific Project Momentum teams because at that time, most of our schools came out of accreditation with warning and we saw tremendous growth from those schools. Then the pandemic hit, and now we're seeing the results of not having that specialized support. As many folks know, you know, people in our office, people in ISD, Title 1, you know, this year, they've been out trying to keep school going, right? Trying to keep schools open. And now we have to. And my question was exactly what yours was to the team this morning, is what are we going to do differently going forward next year? How are we going to have different identifiers? What, you know, what recommendations or questions can I bring to the board and the leadership team about what resources are needing to get back to more of a specific Project Momentum model on a smaller scale to help those higher-need schools? And the hard part is, now that we've gone to a region model with the OSS staff and they're broken up by region, every region has needs. And we're going to see more kids in Tier 2 than ever before, more kids that need some help. So it's very difficult to take from one region team and put them all in Region 2 or Region 3 or Region 1, right? Because then you're taking from another region. So the question that we posed this morning was, how do we use, you know, our current resources and what additional resources might we need, again, to focus on those high-need schools that are really, really outliers? What we would consider the true Project Momentum schools and get back to identifying those? So I would expect to have an update on that the next time we get together. No, we are working on it. I mean, literally, they're designing that as we speak right now and looking at metrics that we've never looked at before and include in the overall formula to help identify schools for next year. So and it's the hardest part, to be honest with everybody. It's really the data. It's, you know, having two years of data that is difficult to interpret at best because of the way it was given, you know, some at home, some not, some brand-new. It's just difficult to get a really good read. You know, that's why I'm, more than anything, next year, I'm looking forward to three solid state assessment tests, which will be new, but that'll help ground us and give us a much deeper and better baseline to measure things. That doesn't help anybody now. And we have a lot of other measures we're looking for and looking at, but it's just difficult. And just looking at I-Ready, you know, a lot of those kids in some of those schools where you might have had a 70, 80, 90, traditionally, they've closed that. And by the end of the year, you know, they make pretty good gains. But again, that's different this year because they're not going to have the same set of resources with teacher turnover and teachers that are out on leave. And it's, your question is an excellent one, and I don't have a perfect answer right now. But I will tell you, we are 100% working on it and we're doing it right now.
The other thing, just to point out, is, you know, since we have more of this regionalized support model right now, the new positions that we're hiring for MTSS support and math support, we are not deploying that way. We're deploying them to the schools that have the largest identified need, just as you just discussed, Dr. Anderson. The other thing, I did want to answer your question about the formula. And Dr. Petrich reminded me that on Page 9 and Page 17 of the spending report that's posted on Board Docs, both formulas are there. But I can tell you right now, as folks want to look for that, that the formula that we used, for example, for wellness, we used the percent of students on free and reduced meals, the percent of English language learners in the school, the percent of students with disabilities. We looked at the mobility rate, chronic absenteeism, a number of students that might be homeless or in foster care. And then we looked at the social-emotional screener domains.
I'm sorry, you said Page 9?
Yes, Page 9 and Page 17. So we can help you locate those.
Yes, please. I would definitely like to go back, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Kiesgmar?
Thank you. First of all, I do appreciate this report. I think it's a really good start. I know that we began with these discussions emphasizing accountability. So I do want to follow up on one of Mrs. Omeche's comments and give Ms. Cohen opportunity to explain. I went over to talk to her to make sure that while we're talking about, you know, something more in real time with respect to our audit department overlooking what we're doing, I wanted her to give us an opportunity as to how, understand how that could fit into what our plan is and what's real, what's possible and what isn't and what might be required from the board for us to get more.
Thank you. So I was able to, you know, to think a little bit more about how to implement that. As we have already discussed, you know, like, I think a few months back with the whole school board, and I know this is one of the major area that the school board would like us to look at. So like I explained, this is part of our continuous monitoring, meaning that we are looking at all the expenditures incurred with related to SO3 spending on a continuous basis at schools as well as with department, like centralized spending. So our testing will be starting very soon and we are hoping to bring back the first phase of the resell back to the Audit Committee around April time. And then when, after the Audit Committee looked at it, we can bring it back, you know, to the school board together with Dr. Presidio's report, maybe separate because our timing look at it may be different, but it can be two separate report. And then bring it back to the school board as a whole so that you all will have all the information with you. And if there is anything we need to make to change our testing plan, we can definitely do that. But we just need to be cautious about the timing, like the resources that my office has. And we have a pretty full-loaded, like, program or like audits coming through June. But June is around the corner and we can plan for the new fiscal year about how we spend, you know, our resources. If this is a high-risk area that the board would like us to devote more resources on.
So I wanted to mention that as a member of the Audit Committee, but also it's been stated that ORSE will have a new report out in July. So, you know, I guess we have to take that into account as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, did you have some?
No, I just want to say, our plan is to finish the first round of the testing by April. So the Audit Committee will have time to look at it April and May. So I think June or July, bring it to the board. I think the timing may work.
Somebody else wanted to say something?
Well, if she brings it to June and July and the ORSE reports in July, you can do that combination thing that Dr. Presidio was talking about earlier. So I think we could, we can work with Ms. Cohen. Dr. Presidio can work with Ms. Cohen to make that happen in alignment. I think that's what you're saying. The audit results along with the ORSE results together to see the comprehensive picture.
I just want us to have realistic expectations. That's the reason I'm following up.
But hearing what her timeline was, April to May to the audit, everything's complete by June, ORSE is in July, we should be able to incorporate her work into the final version of the ORSE work in July. And everybody has that prior to the plans being submitted, the school plans being submitted to the district in the end of August. So I think the timeline works. It's just my sense of listening just now.
Yeah, I think the timing will work. I just want to make sure everyone is on the same page that for audit, we were likely looking at the data through February or March. So it's not real time as what Sloan and other team members are doing. So, but I think if we are all on the same page and we can see structurally if there is any concern at that time.
And I'm sure our Audit Chair will keep everybody up to date. But I just wanted to make sure we weren't expecting something and then we have a surprise somewhere down the road, okay? Thank you, Ms. Cohen. The other thing that you mentioned, Dr. Sloan, yes, that there were some opt-outs. I'm just wondering to what extent people who didn't participate in our evaluations impacted the information we have?
So I was referring to the opt-out of SOL testing. So we had parents who were able to opt out of testing. So I want to say, and somebody can correct me here if you know the number, I think it was around 30% of students who opted out of testing. So that's a big gap when we're trying to use that data as part of our needs-based funding formula. So that's one of the challenges that we had this year.
Okay, and was there some opt-out as well as the SEL evaluations or?
So for this particular report that ORSE did, there was no opt-out on the academic side because there was a series of different measures we could look at. And the final measure that we looked at were grades. And so as long as we had marks for students, which we have basically for all our students, they were included in the students that we looked at. On the wellness side, we did not have SEL data yet. For our K through 2 students, they're being assessed in the winter. So we did not have that data, but we did have it for all our students with attendance and behavior.
Okay, thank you.
And to your question, parents can opt out of the SEL screener. I don't know the percentage off the top of my head. I don't know if anybody else has that. If they do, tell us, 5%?
Okay, so a very low percentage. I know we've heard from these parents. So I just wanted to know the impact that they possibly could have on our information. Speaking of parents, and I know you're working really hard to include them in this whole process and get feedback from parents. I have heard from parents who have said, I'm not seeing the SIR funding where I am. What direction can we give them to say, hey, this is how we're proceeding? This is where you look, et cetera?
Yeah, so I think a couple of things. If you do have that feedback, let us know the specific school so that we can work within that school community. That's always one of the places where we want to start. Secondly, you can remind folks who have that question to look on the website by the end of the month because every school's plan will be posted there and it will include all of the spending. So how they're spending their money based on academics and wellness and what they're spending that money on. Those would be the two major things, I would say, that would be helpful. And then, of course, always, like I say, a call to the school principal, I think, would be helpful in a case like that or to the student's teacher, depending on what the specific question is.
Okay, thank you. Now, one of the things that our ORSE representative mentioned was, and I think the recommendations were to change how we look at, how we assess needs in the future and how we assess that investment. How are we monitoring, first of all, the metrics to know that we need to do that? And how can parents and the board monitor that, those changes? I'm concerned because one of the things I read was that we were asking for flexibility for our local schools to be able to make those changes, which always raises for me fidelity of implementation concerns.
So the ORSE recommendation was specifically to how the school division allocates the funding to an individual school. So we're going to work to revise the funding formulas that we have so that they'll be more aligned with the demonstrated student need and address some of those gaps that were identified in the ORSE report. So that's the first thing, is we will be implementing a new funding formula. Once we've got that established, we can share that, of course, obviously, with the board. We don't have that established just yet, but we're happy to, of course, share that with the board. In terms of the fidelity of implementation of how schools are spending the money that they receive, I do think having all of those plans, the spending plan on the website is really good in terms of public accountability and transparency for us. But one thing I want to make sure everybody understands is that the plans, the school plans have to be approved. So they have to be approved by their region office and by their SIR team. So Dr. Petrich, for example, read 200 different plans and gave a lot of feedback before the plan could be approved. You know, for example, if a school was going to spend something that wasn't within the spending guidelines that we had established as a division, then the school needed to revise that and resubmit the plan. And there were a number of school plans that had to go through that revision cycle. So the spending guidelines are very clear. They're aligned to the evidence-based strategies in the division plan. And we think that that's going to help with fidelity of implementation as well as having the staff, academic lead and wellness need at each of the schools is another resource to help with that this year.
Okay, thank you. In my last eight seconds, in terms of involving parents, are we in any way going to be seeking feedback from our parents and families through a survey or anything like that to kind of enhance that process?
So there will be multiple opportunities for community input. Right now, we have a community survey that's open. It's an open-ended survey, so parents can give us written feedback about our spending related to academics and wellness. That's been open, I think, since the beginning of February and it closes for this cycle on March 4. But there'll be other cycles within the following years as well.
Thank you.
We have the SIR public hearing too, as I want to recall, this Thursday. So we want to remind the public that, please, we welcome your comments to the public hearing process too.
What we will ask is for you to put up the slide which shows the dates for public engagement as the last slide when we close out this session so that people can see that as well. But it is March 4 for the survey and then this Thursday for the public hearing.
And I'm sure our communications department will give us something all the board members can tweet to all our.
Sure, in just real time, it is a feedback form. So first is calling it a survey, it's a feedback form. But we'll put the information out and we'll work to put that in our communications this coming week to our community and our newsletter coming week to our community and our newsletter, saying, "Hey, there's one more week to provide feedback on SER through this point in time."
So if I can, just in our next report, if we can get an update on how we've enhanced that parent engagement.
Okay, sure.
Appreciate it. We have Mr. Frisch followed by Ms. Maron.
Thank you. Can we go to page seven of the narrative? I don't know if, yep, of the, no, the one that's actually called a narrative document. It's like a presentation, but, yep. In there, on page seven, we get details about the intervention, special education teacher contract extensions. One thing I've heard from numerous special education educators is that their administrators are requiring them to fill that 30 minutes with other work as opposed to the purpose that it was intended. I'm sure I'm not the only Board member who's heard that from educators. What are we doing to make sure that we have fidelity of intent around what this time was supposed to be for? And, you know, the idea being that they are extremely taxed right now, and we want to give them that extra support for the intense workload that they're carrying.
Well, I appreciate that question. I think we're going to have to, or at least I'm going to have to, look into that in a little bit more detail. Certainly, we established some guidelines about, you know, how that time would be used. That was to prepare and work with students and to compensate them for the additional workload that they're taking on. So if that's not happening, we're going to need to review that. So I think we need to probably review that in our leadership team with our Region Assistant Superintendents. It looks like Dr. Ivey has something, too.
We can reinforce that as a whole with our principal group, but if you have specifics of where you've heard that's occurring, let either the RAS know or me know, and we'll definitely follow up.
Okay. On slide six of the presentation, when we talk about making the full plans available to the community, in one, as described, it sounds like it's going to be in one central place on the FCPS website. Is it not possible to have the school plans available on the school websites? And I would take it a step further to make sure that the plans are marked with when they were last updated so that people don't look at old ones and think that this is still happening or whatever. And second, could we also include where we post these plans, the accountability reports as they become available, so that people have, you know, a lot of context for the information they're looking at, too? And finally, as a multipart question, we obviously have received a variety of different details about these reports to kind of help digest what it is that we're looking at. Having that kind of primer for the community as they look at the full report as to what they're looking at would be helpful as well.
Really good questions, or a couple suggestions in there in terms of date stamping and providing some contextual information. We definitely can do those things. In terms of posting them on individual school sites, at this time, I don't think we can do that. We'll revisit it. It seems like it would be easy to do, but we have to post these things in a format that they're ADA accessible. We can't just, like, post a PDF of the document. So there's actually a lot of time that it takes to go in and post the plans.
But we could link to the ADA-available version on the main FCPS website from...
That we could do, yeah. That we could do, but we're trying to minimize the workload a little bit by putting them in a central repository, but definitely a link we could do.
Oh, for sure. I get that. And, you know, I think what we would all like to see, and I'm going to speak for everybody in the room now, is just, it'd be great if, for example, OCCR could work with the schools on a mechanism for notifying the community that we, these reports are now, or these plans are now available. You can find them here. They will be updated as we work our way through them, and if you're looking for information about the fidelity or accountability issues, you can find those reports as well. I just don't want for us to be in a position where people continue to wonder where these things are, and it's great that we're finally putting them online. On the tutoring front...
Looks like Helen has a comment.
Just wanted to respond to you directly, Carl. So we will be adding that to the toolkit so that principals can share with their communities exactly where they are. We do have the summaries of each SER plan on the websites right now as soon as the ADA-compliant versions are ready. We can add a link to every webpage with them. Even if we're adding it in a central place, we can add a link to find your own school plan here on your own webpage, so we can make sure that it is accessible. And then we'll make sure that schools can communicate it out and that we also communicate it out division-wide as well, in our normal kind of eight to 10 touch points as well.
Awesome. And obviously, as Board members, we can elevate those things in our newsletters as well. On the tutoring front, I mean, we basically burst out into applause when we heard that the RFP is coming on virtual tutoring. And just to be clear, this is an issue of scale, really, right? Like, we want everybody to have access, and for everybody to have access in FCPS, we need to offer it in such a way that that's possible. When you said, "For anyone who needs it," is that defined by the School Division or by choice?
Thank you for that. That's a great clarifying question. It would be defined by choice. So a teacher could assign a student to that service, but a student could assign themselves to that service, or a parent could assign their student to that service. So it's by choice.
Great. And if the RFP is this week, when do you anticipate availability to begin?
Well, we still anticipate we're going to need several weeks to interface the online virtual system with our own systems here, so we're still several weeks away, unfortunately.
All right. Well, I speak for myself. I think we will all be trumpeting that from the rooftops as soon as it's available so that everybody knows about it. And anything we can do to make sure students know that they can opt themselves in as well would be great.
Carl, if I could tell you, Mr. Frisch, if I could tell you one other thing. We also know part of the tutoring issue is our teachers, our existing base of potential tutors, our in-house tutors, they're tired. They're exhausted. We are looking at making some tweaks to tutoring pay to potentially increase the supply of teachers who might be willing to do that after hours or before school hours tutoring. But I totally agree, this is going to be a game changer for online tutoring as well, for anyone who wants it, and we're excited. It took us a lot of months, but we're getting the scale that you talked about that I think is going to be important. And this is something we really can talk about this multi-year. This is something that may become something we want to really keep as a tool moving forward as a School Division after we experience it for a couple of years.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. We have Ms. Maron now.
Thank you. I'm just setting my timer, because I know sometimes when you're virtual, you can't hear the timer, so I'm going now. Okay, good afternoon. I want to talk about three things. One is to pick up on the tutoring conversation. Yeah, I'm thrilled to hear about that. I think, though, that it just underscores, again, how important the smaller class sizes are, and it continues to be a perennial problem for some of our schools, not all of them. You know, I have schools where classes are 16, and then I've got schools like my own kiddo's schools where there's 28. And while tutoring can help in the short term, we're still going to face that long-term problem of these large class sizes. Relatedly, this is something I've mentioned before publicly about pay. And Dr. Brayran, you just mentioned, you know, getting the tutors and also even to summer thinking, and I want to touch on that, is, you know, I continue to wish that we could fund full-time staff. In lieu of that, I continue to advocate very strongly for very high hourly pay. We all know there's a hiring, you know, crisis, for lack of a better words, and we are just not going to hire people for, you know, an additional buck or two per hour than we usually do. So I really support being able, for schools, to be able to hire people at a very competitive rate. Additionally, for summer planning, you know, as soon as those dates can be set, I recognize you might not have the staffing all in, but I know even for my own family, we weren't able to participate because we had put in place some summer travel, and so being able to participate would have been great for my children. I also want to reflect on something that was mentioned about the social-emotional and that language. It's really a misnomer, and I agree with what's been said. It's, when I think about it, it's like the mental strength and mental preparedness that our children need. And so, like, I'm looking at something my son made in Wonderful Miss Green's class, and see if you can show it, in second grade, third grade, you know, that just says, you know, like, this is just one little thing that he does, right? A little lesson. Another thing, he has personally said to me, "Mommy, calm down, take your breaths, Miss Green says to count one, two, three." And I love that I am trying to emulate what our students are doing. And so I think that calling it social-emotional really gets confusing when what we're talking about is being mentally prepared to do the work. So if we can think about that language and how that might help clarify to some parents and families, that can help. I'm also looking over the letters, you know, that went home, and I got my two for my children about, I can't show it up to the screen, you know, about the SEL screener. And honestly, I understand this as a parent. You know, I'm certainly privy to a lot of internal information, but as a parent, that was okay for me and my husband, who's not in the thick of it every minute of the day. So I'm not sure how much more information we need to give parents other than, you know, what's directly about their kids. They might not, I think the whole school plan, I'm not hearing a lot of ask for that, but I am hearing about, you know, their kid. And finally, I do want to reiterate that I'm glad to hear the approach of the continuous research improvement approach. You know, I was in a meeting, and I know my time's just about up, there's any meeting with elementary school staff and, you know, watching these teachers try and plan out, you know, economic, long-term budgets. And I also agree, we've got to figure out how to weight this for poverty, and I think we've got to just be open that we're going to be improving this over time.
Let's see if we can get a response from Dr. Presidio to your comments.
Well, I would just say, we definitely agree with a lot of those comments, and we appreciate it. And if there's any follow-up discussion offline without a three-minute timer, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
And now we have Ms. Cohen followed by Ms. Seismar Heiser.
I'm definitely going to need to go back. Just starting with some questions about summer school specifically. I'm hearing that we're offering $68 an hour to teachers for summer school, but only $16 an hour for IA's. Is that accurate?
So I'm going to ask Ms. Clamenco to help a little bit with summer school questions. She's coordinating a lot of that. The $68 an hour is for ESY teachers only because we're really trying to recruit staff. You know that we had a tremendous challenge this past year.
I'm not complaining about the 68. I don't want you to think that. I'm complaining about the 16.
Well, I didn't think you were really complaining about anything. I just wanted to clarify what the 68 was for. So that's the ESY rate to recruit the teachers, and then the IA rate, do you have anything on that, Noel?
No, just that the IA rate is the same across the special ed and the gen ed programs. The only rate, the only salary increase is for those ESY teachers, for the special education program teachers, because of the struggles we had last year and the prioritization to ensure that we have full staffing for those programs.
Yeah, I would strongly encourage we take a look at that IA pay, because we all know, especially if you've been in a sped classroom, you're doomed if you don't have your IA. So I don't want IA's to be in a situation where it makes a lot more sense for them to work at Target this summer than our summer school. So I would definitely ask that. Another question about summer school, I know that ESY is separate and distinct from the summer school opportunities that we're talking about here. So how are students with significant disabilities going to get access to some of the opportunities we're talking about this summer?
So our elementary and middle school programs are school-based as well, so schools will look at their student population, and they will select students to attend. So I'm not sure I can, sorry, I'm trying to make eye contact. I'm not sure I can specifically state about individual students in that way, but I think if their needs can be met through the program and they fit the targeted data metrics that we're looking at, they would be welcome. We definitely have special ed and ESOL resource teachers as part of the makeup for our gen ed programs.
I would just really encourage, I think, sometimes, understandably, our principals get very focused on ESY and meeting those very specific goals, and sometimes kids get funneled into that instead of these more holistic opportunities. I'm worried about the tutoring as well. Are we going to make sure that we have tutors who have been trained in helping kids with specific disabilities? You know, I don't want that tutoring to become an additional source of frustration for our kids with special needs. Another question that I have, I guess, is about the tutoring. We certainly have all gotten a lot of feedback about it, and, you know, there's some real frustration that it's almost March and we're still not there. So if you could just speak to maybe that process to help families understand why we haven't been able to offer it yet.
No, that's a great, great question. And again, it does vary by school in terms of the availability, and the reason for that variability across schools really has been the ability to attract folks who are interested in working before or after school or on the weekends, providing that tutoring support. And in many schools, staff are just really at the point, beyond the point of exhaustion, and it's been hard for principals to be able to hire staff to do that. That is one reason why, you know, we're excited about the online tutoring platform and looking at greater flexibility for use of SER funds to provide some targeted support, as well as increasing the tutor pay rate. But the reason for that variability just is the inability to, in that particular environment, to attract folks who want to work additional hours.
I would also add for the online version, that we're in the final process, you know, I would like to thank Ms. Burden's staff, Ms. Clamenco's staff. It's probably the fastest large RFP in the history of Fairfax. I mean, the speed and the effort that the team, the put in, the tutoring team put into that, I've never seen such a large RFP delivered that fast. So while it's, it seems like a long time, and we wish we could have done it faster, we really did expedite it, and I think everybody's going to be extremely pleased with the final result.
I'm glad that you mentioned how tired our teachers were, because you're setting me up for my next question. You know, when we look at MTSS and how many more kids we have eligible for Tier 2 services, I have a small elementary school, for example, right now that has 73 kids in Tier 2 supports for math. So how do we work with schools to make sure we are helping? I mean, that is just not, the idea that we're going to be able to get those kids, which is not reasonable, probably, on grade level by the time we're done with the end of the year. But those kinds of supports, what have we talked about within flexibility within the school day to try to reclaim more time for that? You know, I worry, I'm going to get a million emails from angry Fless teachers, but, you know, do we, are we thinking of other blocks of time in the school day where no, you know, no conversation about the exciting opportunities that are offered by some things? But if we're looking at this and having this conversation about, "We've got to get some of the basics down," is there room for the rest of the year to talk about, maybe some of the gravy is on hold while we really focus in here?
Well, I think what I would say is a couple things. One, we've really had a big focus on a shift around Tier 1 instruction and what that needs to look like, and we've been working across departments and regions on more effective and targeted Tier 1 instruction to minimize the amount of kids who need that Tier 2 support. We've obviously provided additional resources and materials to make the Tier 2 support easier, because that does occur largely in the general classroom. And then the Tier 3 support that needs to happen, schools do have flexibility to group and regroup students within the day based on the need to receive those services. So they have that flexibility.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess just super quick with the rest of this round of time, just to echo a little bit of what Dr. Anderson said about those SEL scores coming home. I think the questions that I'm getting from parents, and much like Ms. Maron said, is, what are we doing? If your kid came home with a 1 in one of the areas, what happens to that 1? Is it told to their guidance counselor, does their advisory teacher? Like, you know, what happens as a result of that?
Well, it's not just one score that schools have looked at, but again, they've looked for the students across the different domains who might need additional support outside of the Tier 1 structures that are already in place. But it wouldn't be just one particular skill or one particular subdomain that we're looking at. And again, as Dr. Brayran mentioned, you know, this is a growth area for us. We just hired a social-emotional learning coordinator for our school system because we didn't have anybody in that role and in that position. So it's a growth area for us. I mean, we definitely, I think, need to do a better job communicating, as we've heard, what does that screener information mean to a parent, so we can work on communicating around that. But we're going to need more time to develop our program as well. I just want to be real transparent about that. We're still at the emergent stages of additional program support. So that'll be an area that we'll continue to work on together.
You know, Dr. Presidio, if I could, Ms. Cohen, too. I just attended a national conference for school superintendents. I went to the advanced cohort of school districts that are doing SEL. Folks, we are the advanced school district. We are farther ahead than most school districts in the country, and this is new territory for most of us at this level of detail. So the questions are great, it's going to help us get better, we're committed to this cycle of continuous improvement. And I think you're right, Ms. Cohen. I mean, the person on the street, "My kid got a 1, now what?" Right? If my kid has an F, parents know, many parents know what to do. So I do think this communication that even Dr. Anderson talked about, especially on these, what I call, again, life skills. Yes, they're social-emotional, but they're really life skills. We need to do some additional communication, both division-wide to answer frequently asked questions, and more school-specific. When we send these out, I think in the future, there may be some, yes, some additional narrative or context, "What do I do with this?" Much like you can get when you get the comments from a report card, and it says, "These are things to do." Or schedule a conference with a teacher, or have an email conversation, or telephone conversation.
The students, too. I know I'm over time, but just, not just parents. The students need to know what supports come back to them if they put themselves out here to answer these questions.
No, that's good. That's good. No, that's good. That's good. That's very helpful. And, you know, Panorama, frankly, when I went, Panorama is who is being used by the large national school districts. So we didn't pull something from thin air. The districts that have been on the forefront, really, when I looked at their work compared to what ours, we are as far along, if not more. And Panorama is, has been, one of the choice vendors that many nationally large school districts are using to do the work. And I have some contact information that I have sharing with Dr. Presidio and Dr. Boyd so that we can be part of this even larger learning group. So we're not the only district really having these conversations with the community and with school board members. And I definitely left going that we need to do better about talking about the work than what we already have. We've had some distractions, as you know, the last few months. And this is the work we got to get back to as we really shift to this next phase of the pandemic, is to really put instruction and social emotional supports for kids back front and center. And our principals are dying to do it, and I know all of us are, too. We want to maintain health and safety for our staff, and we will, but we need to start to double down on some of these things that I know are keeping board members and parents up at night.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I have Ms. Seismar Heiser followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. And I appreciate, Dr. Presidio, all your hard work and putting this information together for us today so we can make sure we are monitoring our funding and our spending and bringing youth community concerns. Many of my questions have been asked, so I wanted to focus on something I haven't heard as much about. And that is my concern about, I fully agree on needs-based funding, so I won't put that out there. But you mentioned in the report on page two in the summary, and I think you mentioned as well, that we have fewer standardized tests at the high school level to be able to get that academic data. However, the social emotional needs at high school were off the charts, according to your data. And we know there's a connection between the two. So my worry is that if we're doing our needs-based funding based on our data, but we don't have full data or as much data on academic needs at high school because there's lack of standardized testing, we know, how are we looking at that assessment for academic needs as well as social emotional needs? I'm very concerned that we're going to underfund what our high schools need. These students have to pass the SOLs. These students have to be successful in post-secondary. I'm just concerned. I want to ask that question.
So thank you for the question. When we, one of the recommendations in the big report is that we actually take another look at how we're identifying our high school students and try to get some more or some additional measures that will allow us to do a better job. Most of our students right now were being identified simply on marks. And historically, we have not, even though we saw an increase during the pandemic, we have historically not had that many students who have marks of D and F, which was the criterion that was being used. So that was an additional recommendation in the report to try to get a better assessment of how our students are doing at that school level. And, Dr. Presidio, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I appreciate, I did see that in the report of additional look. My concern is that it is March, nearly March. Our high school students don't have a lot of time. Our seniors, the last time they're full year in the building, they were freshmen. We already saw Class of 2021 struggling post-secondary. Our juniors next year have to take some very important SOLs to get a high school diploma. So do our seniors this year. And so I appreciate what you're saying, but what happens in the meantime? Are we going to lose another year or two of students without some of this greater intervention?
Well, the high schools have the largest share of the funding, so it's not a funding issue right now, right? So when we talk about redoing the funding formula, a lot of what's actually going to happen in terms of impact is our secondary schools and our large secondary schools will have a smaller share of the funding when we look at a needs-based formula. So schools have the money now, and they are spending the money to the best of their ability right now. But it continues to be a challenge, as we talked about, to find staff who are interested, you know, in working outside of the contract date to take that additional pay. That's the biggest challenge I think schools have right now. It's not a funding issue. It's really a personnel issue.
I do hear that. And I, you know, I understand that, you know, we have this, I've said to other people, it's the first time I think I can know that we've had money and not people, right? And so, you know, in a very sort of basic way of putting it, I guess what I'm saying is as you're changing this formula going forward, I don't want you to think that there's a huge need at the high school and secondary level, and these students don't have a lot of time. And I'm not trying to take away from elementary because those fundamental skills are really important, too. I am just concerned about the way you're changing this formula based on the data that we have, the impact it may have next year or even after that. That's my concern.
Yeah, and I wouldn't worry too much about it for next year because, again, schools can carry over money from this year into next year. So I don't think you'll see a huge impact in terms of schools not having enough money at the high school level. And again, we'll share, once we've, we've not developed the new formula yet, once we've developed it, we can share that with the board as well.
All right. And then I guess I would ask, as you're developing that new formula, take a look at how you can maybe tie together the high social emotional needs with academic needs and how that inner relationship can work. Can I ask you, and also just keep in mind for our students in high school, we have a short amount of time to set them up for success once they leave here. So one of my concerns is the money that we're spending on the on-time graduation. While I think it's really important to make sure we scoop up our students and help them get to graduation, I worry too much about that on-time focus, especially for some of our students who can be in school till '22 when they have had the last two years that they've had. So can you talk to me a little bit more about how you're going to balance those two mentalities?
Well, I think our goal is, you know, again, as we talk about every student by name and by need, right? So, I mean, we definitely want to differentiate and individualize based on what a student and a family thinks is best for that particular student. Our goal, of course, though, because most of our students want to graduate on time and graduate with their, you know, classmates and their peers, is to make sure that students are able to do that. If we are working with a student and a family and they feel like they would be interested in more time and need more time, we always communicate that in, you know, IEP meetings. And that's something, again, you and I have kind of talked with Dr. Boyd about maybe doing a better job of how we communicate that in our IEP meetings. So we know we have some growth to make there as well. But really, our approach is to individualize and differentiate with the largest, you know, percentage, obviously, of our students needing to graduate on time.
I will just maybe add that it's not necessarily what the parent's child wanted, but what the IEP team thinks is best. And that's the conversation. I think the culture of that conversation has not necessarily been towards not on time.
No, I appreciate that. We need to continue to improve there.
Thank you. I'll take a go back, please.
Thank you, Ms. Seismar Heiser. Ms. McLaughlin followed by Ms. Pekarsky.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the comments my colleagues have made. And there's really not going to be enough time to go through everything that every one of us would like to talk about. But I really want to make sure there isn't a disconnect here about Fairfax County Schools and its commitment to social emotional learning. Having been here a long time, I just want to bring up Ellen Galinsky, Mind in the Making, Executive Function in Action, dated December 2014. You know, talked about her partnership with Fairfax County Schools. I was here at the time that we started doing this pioneering work. So, Dr. Brabran, I'm glad you noted that at the National Superintendent's Conference, Fairfax County Schools is being recognized this because this isn't new. It's not new to the pandemic. And so, Dr. Presidio, when you said, you know, we're in our emergent stages, maybe we're at the emergent stages of the SEL screener? I just want to make sure, because I really think it's important, we should be celebrating that we've been a leader for some time. And to what Ms. Maron commented she made, that it's being mentally prepared to do the work, I mean, as I understood where Dr. Brabran's really going, these are the essential functioning skills, you know, executive functioning skills is how we've talked about them and everything. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood from your standpoint, what you were thinking, that we're still emerging.
Oh, I really appreciate that question. And thank you for reaching back in the history a little bit to Ellen Galinsky. I had the pleasure of moderating that panel and the work and working with her in our early childhood program. And, you know, a lot of things, even in Portrait of a Graduate, you see some of these skills, right? And that was 2015. So a lot of this work we've been doing, I think what I was trying to say is, you know, as a school system, we haven't developed like an FCPS SEL curriculum, for example, right? You might see that in some school systems. We didn't have an SEL program coordinator, right? So the work and the support around this had to fall to folks that had other full-time, you know, job assignments and commitments. Also, I think we understand the work differently now after the pandemic than we did before. You know, we focused a lot on some of those executive functioning skills previously. We have a long history of doing that. We have curriculum and resources and materials to do that. But when we think about some of the issues, you know, with anxiety and stress management and, you know, some of the things that have emerged and become, you know, more acute, I would say as a result of the pandemic, that's where we still need to grow. And that's where I'm saying we're kind of emergent.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. It did come as a surprise to me, knowing that we had done this work starting in '14, that we didn't have an SEL program coordinator. So, you know, I'm pleased that we are dedicating ESAR dollars to this. And I do hope that you'll continue to bring to our board, whether it's the, you know, tutoring going forward. I'm hoping we're going to learn a lot from this infusion of federal dollars on how we can move FCPS in a manner that many of us have talked about for, gosh, going on almost a decade. And it has been coming through recession and not having the funds to it. But the intentionality of these lifelong skills, that was what Portrait of a Graduate was a focus on, is that it's not just rote learning, but it's how do you educate the whole child? And part of that is that SEL. Quickly, I will just say I have had families come to me, Dr. Brabran, concerned that they're paying out of pocket for tutoring. And so I do think that, to, you know, what Carl said and others, yeah, we'll be celebrating really heavily once this gets done. But I also really appreciate the guidance you're giving us, and I say this to the public watching, speak up, let us know, let's connect you with the principals and the regional superintendents, you know, school by school, classroom by classroom. We want to help kids and connect them with the supports that the ESAR dollars are supposed to be there for. And I will just say thank you again to our educators in the schools. I know they're doing everything they can. And it's all about the partnership. So I'll go back if time permits.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin. I have Ms. Pekarsky followed by Ms. Tolan.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all your work. It's been good to talk to our RASs and our principals about some of these. And as Dr. Anderson brought up, the parent education piece around the, what do these scores, these tests, what does this mean? That's feedback I also gave to every single one of them because it can, you know, transparency is important, but if we don't have that parent, what does this mean for my child? I think it can also cause a lot of anxiety and misunderstandings. So I look forward to anything we can do in that area. Can you talk a little bit to me about the language services, the multilingual texting, the interpreters? I know there's money in the first year, but that money ends.
Rich, do you want to help us with that one?
Sure. So the multilingual, I guess, the first part is the telephone interpretation service. And that's been going strong since, I think, back since about April of 2020. So that money is being spent. I think it's not, I think there was a little confusion on the funding. Our office has been funding it for the last couple of years, but the ESAR money is kicking in now to fund that, and it's going to continue to fund that for this year and then through next year. So that program should be continuing. That allows staff members to have a third-party interpreter with families in a telephone call. The multilingual texting service, similar to tutoring, has been going through an RFP process, and we are just about finished with that. So we should have, we've been using the multilingual texting process. We've been using the free version. All schools have had access, and we've trained schools on how to use that with a few different vendors. The RFP process is finishing up now. We've, looks like we've chosen, you know, one particular vendor. And then training should be happening for all principals and staff members coming up, you know, hopefully as soon as possible this spring, as to how to use that multilingual texting program. And then that program essentially is all staff members, they won't use their personal cellphone or cell phone. They'll use their FCPS laptop. They can send out a message to families, and the message arrives in the family's home language. And then families can respond in their home language and arrives back to the teacher or staff member in English. So should be coming up very soon.
Okay, thank you. It's just trying to figure out what that means from whatever. I'm losing track with all of the money. So thank you. Another similar question, the graduation reporting tool. Did we ever go through the RFP process? I guess through the report, it said that we did not. We decided to do something internally?
I can take that one. Yeah, so we had asked for money. We were planning on going through an RFP process. And in the meanwhile, Mr. Sethi, who is online, if he wants to jump in, found a way to do it in-house through some innovative work. So we are in the process of working towards having that without having to go through an RFP process, which is really helpful. I don't know if he wants to add anything in. It doesn't, oh, there he is.
I'll just add pretty quickly, we have done a pilot of that. We have had a few DSS staff look at the report that was produced and provide feedback. And we will now work with the teams to scale that up. So that will require training, communications, and getting it out in the hands of more staff in the schools.
That's great. So I guess we're reallocating that money. It's always good. Good job. Thank you. The tutoring, I've also heard many families have had to go out of pocket. So that is actually really huge. So I did just want to say that. I'm really excited. I think we waited a little bit long, or longer than a lot of families would have had, would have liked to see, but it's amazing. So I am extremely happy with that. Since we have Mr. Sethi, can we talk a little bit about the cybersecurity investments? And I see that there was a part-time position. Is this person overseeing the cybersecurity issues? Or what is their role?
So the cybersecurity project initiative involves us building capacity on many fronts. I think the dollar spend that you're referring to was trying to bring in some technical knowledge from outside. So that would be consulting resources. And then we are building an RFP, which the team is finalizing, which would be a substantial shift in how we all sort of use our authentication, how we log into the systems, how our students access data. That RFP would be the large majority of the spend related to the cybersecurity project.
Okay, thank you. Another, just clarifying question, the Zoom licenses, are those annual? I saw that that was only on the budget for this year. I think it's a tool that, you know, schools are not really taking advantage of. So will they be able to continue to do so after '22?
Yeah, the Zoom licenses are annual. What we did was we have the Zoom licenses allocated for every staff member. So every teacher, every principal will continue to have access. We had purchased additional licenses to do virtual school-based events. So many schools had used the additional license as we use for a school board meeting to host parent-teacher nights, large events virtually in the building. That licensing is currently set up for, I believe, this year. So it would be a discussion for us to know how many schools may want to continue that or may revert back to in-person. And we can adjust licensing and funding accordingly.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I do think that's something that we will have to have some conversations around because I do think our families are really taking advantage of that option for many different reasons and not even having to do with COVID, quite honestly. Okay, I'll give you a few seconds back. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pekarsky. Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. I have just sort of overarching question, looking at the overall chart of the spending plan, and just noting that there are a number of areas where we have spending. So for example, the family liaisons, we have, and I think I may have just answered my own question here. We don't, we have money in FY '22. We don't have money in FY '23 or moving forward. So is that something that has moved into the FY '23 budget?
We included that in the FY '23 budget as a baseline adjustment.
Right. And so then, for example, if I take my other example, I was looking at, number one, the intervention for special education teacher contracts. We have that in FY '23 and FY '22, but not moving forward. So just in general, if you look at this chart, as things are zeroed out, I know some things are one-time expenditures, like we just talked about the cybersecurity consultant. But how are we really looking as we move forward, especially the especially the whole part of the discussion about how we're, you know, behind, I hate to use that word, but we're not spending as much in this year as we might have expected just because of the timing of getting everything going. So I just want to make sure from the budgeting perspective that we're, how are we really paying attention to what do we need to carry forward? What do we need to have in our regular budget versus the ESER funding over the next couple of years, if that makes sense?
Well, I've got a crystal ball up in my office that could probably help you out with that. You know, we'll start developing the fiscal '24 budget in just a few months, soon as fiscal '23 is completed. Of course, we'll also have a new superintendent who will certainly want to weigh into all of this. But for now, the fiscal '22 funds that aren't spent will carry over routinely as part of grant funds. We don't know what the amount of those funds will be yet. I mean, you know, I know that the special ed teachers' line item will be fully spent because we've, half of it's gone and half of it's, half of it's been spent and half the time has passed. Some of the other funds will be carried over and that work will continue. There will be some funds left just because of the time due to, you know, posting a position, doing job interviews, recruitment, that whole thing. So we're not going to know probably until two or three months from now what we are looking at. And as far as fiscal '23 and '24, we're already looking at that, senior leadership is, to see where we might want to make changes. But it's a little bit too early to plan for that right now because we're still in the middle of '22.
No, I understand. And I understand all that timing. I just want to make sure that as we determine through our ORC reports, et cetera, that things are really working, that we're not saying, oh, you know, we probably only need this for two years, we're not going to carry it over into FY '24. You know, I just want to make sure that that planning is happening. And it kind of gets me to another comment that I had, just in my discussions with the regional leadership. I wanted to say that one of the things I was really excited about, and I think this is maybe one of those nice things, if there's some things like that coming out of COVID, the opportunity for us to really use this continuous planning with school improvement plans is incredible. Just to carry that forward, you know, whether we're spending this ESER money or as we move forward over the years, to have that iterative process with the schools, I think is an incredible opportunity that we haven't really, we didn't have to do before COVID, or maybe we should have been doing, but we didn't think of it. So happy that we're doing that. One question I had, you had on the slide something, it was about school support. And I just wondered if you could elaborate a little bit about, I'm sure it's OSS, who else is involved in that school support as we're moving through this process?
Well, that's a large number of folks. Obviously, we have the Department of School Improvement and Support. But in addition, you know, I did mention earlier that we're hiring some additional support staff. So that's increasing our capacity around, particularly around math and MTSS. But the bottom line is, I mean, all of the central office departments have been supporting school efforts. ISD has been doing that, DSS has been doing that. And, you know, we talk about the workload and the exhaustion level of folks in schools, and that is absolutely true. But the folks in the departments are right in the same boat. You know, I mean, the all-hands-on-deck was just one example. But folks in central offices have been supporting schools throughout the pandemic in a really, you know, collaborative manner. So it just kind of depends. I mean, it's a large effort to support the targeted schools that we've identified.
I appreciate the interdisciplinary approach. I think it's super important. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I too want to thank you all for all of your hard work and for every staff member, every teacher who has just gone above and beyond the call of duty over the past two and a half years. None of us expected, when we closed for a short period of time, to see us embark on this process. Perhaps the positive of the process has been the ESER funding and the requirement for us to really look at innovation in how we do our planning and how we support our students, both academically and with those essential life skills that you, we call social emotional learning. Along those lines, I have a few questions. First, you know, we have the carryover at the end of the year for all of our school-based funding. And typically, there's a percentage of that carryover that is then, the schools are allowed to keep and the rest goes back centrally. Why didn't we do that with this?
I'll see if Ms. Burden wants to add anything. But the thought was with the school-based distribution of funds this year, schools worked very hard to develop a plan based on the amount of available funding, often budgeting for things that will occur during the summer, right? So when we change the formula based on ORC's accountability report, we feel like it's most appropriate to allow schools to carry over the funds from this year into next year. And then starting with the next school year, they'll have a new funding formula, which in some cases will bring them more funding, in some cases will bring them less. But we felt based on how schools had planned and thought about their plans, particularly extending them into the summer, allowing carryover beyond the typical cap rate would be appropriate.
So conceptually, in a corporate environment, that would be committed funds. And those funds have been committed to certain activities. I just want to make sure everybody in the community understands that. The second piece is that we've undertaken, and I was glad Ms. Tolan mentioned it, a new way of planning. And that planning for the ESER funds and that continuous improvement has been very instructive to all of us. And my question is, we have had a school improvement plan process that frankly, having been part of that in the past, I haven't always been enamored with its focus on ingenuity and innovation. How do you see the lessons learned from what we're going through now to inform how we do SIPs going forward?
Well, I mean, it was a great question and suggestion that we look at how we do that. You know, most school systems operate on an annualized school improvement plan. There are others, however, that do something that is more iterative. You know, I'm familiar with some systems that even work on a 90-day improvement plan. And those are things that we have talked about here during my tenure, to be honest with you. It's an incredible amount of work to do that is really the downside and the trade-off. So I think it's a great question. There's a lot for us to consider about how we can improve our school improvement planning process. I think that, you know, if that's of interest to the board, when a new superintendent is hired, perhaps that's something that we could talk about together. But there are different models, but they do come with an increased workload cost, for sure.
Thank you. I think as a follow-on, next step, I will be suggesting that we have some sort of, and maybe this is something Leedy brings back to us in her next report, but of the lessons learned associated with this process and how we can better make sure that our school-based planning is more effective, especially when I see the role of community engagement, parent engagement in influencing the process and actually putting in clearly defined metrics. And so perhaps we'll, actually, I will be putting that as a next step. Additionally, I have some real concerns. You mentioned about the vacancies and filling. I understand certain regions have higher vacancy rates than others, in particular, the highest needs ones. What is the superintendent, what are you doing and your staff doing to actually shore up those vacancies? Because I think that we know that's a problem.
Well, sure. I don't believe Mr. McDonald was able to make it today unless he's online, and he may want to add some things. We just did a huge Back to Fairfax event where we're really working to bring more of our folks back here into the school system for both instructional and operational jobs. I'll be honest, the headline today from Forbes about us being one of the best large companies to work for in the country and the only institution educationally in Virginia, I don't think is going to hurt us at all. And it reminds us of the extraordinary things we did to support our staff over the last two years is why I think we've made that list. So those are a couple of things that we're doing. We still have our cohort programs where we're growing our IAs into teachers, and we can get you some more information for, on that, that we're beefing up and continuing in on the budget that I presented to you all last month. But Sean, are there anything else? Mr. McDonald, anything else you'd want to share beyond the comments I've made?
No, I think, well, yes, I think ultimately, each of our schools that have needs continuously are working with their staffing specialists to identify what those needs are and working to actively recruit individuals to support that need. So, you know, that looks a little bit different in each of those school communities beyond what we do in terms of our general advertisement. So we'll continue to partner with schools to try and locate the best candidates for those roles. The job market continues to be a challenge, but it doesn't mean that we'll rest, we'll continue to push forward and try and identify talent for each of those vacancies. We do have a job fair coming up for teacher talent next, early next month. We'll continue to host those events to try and connect schools with available candidates and get those positions filled.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Here's my concern. There is a direct linkage that if you have substitutes in a classroom and for most of the year, then you have a challenge with discipline, and then you have a challenge with SELs. If we have certain regions that have a higher vacancy rate, then we are passing on those challenges or accelerating them. And so I would just urge that we have a prioritization for our highest needs areas to have the first filling of employees. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 1:20, and I have quite the go-back list. If I can get a commitment from this board as to where they want to go from here, I'd appreciate it. I can give each board member that has asked for a go-back one minute, if you're okay. And that, with that, we would be done by, I hope, 1:45. I see a bunch of shaking heads, so I'm going to go ahead and go with the one-minute go-backs. And so I have Ms. Omeish followed by Dr. Anderson.
Okay, thanks. Given where we're at, can you just, can we revisit the 10 million, given the dining, outdoor, class monitors, and then the 1.4 million for mitigation coordinators? Just thinking ahead, this goes into 2024, right? Unless adjusted, conditions are changing?
No, both of those line items that you're referencing are in fiscal '22. The 1.4 million is the mitigation that's outsourced. And actually, they've, their spending is a little ahead of everybody else. So we'll need to be able to address that if we continue it in fiscal '23 and fiscal '24. And same thing with the 10 million. The, all of the funds that have been spent there are not reflected because we wanted to allocate these funds sooner than they were available based on the grant application. So we need to move some expenses that are just occurring in the wrong place. But those funds, the amount of funds that have been spent there will go up as well.
So they're not or are recurring? If they're going up?
They're not recurring, but I think it shows about 2 million has been spent. And that number is larger than that. But we need to move some expenses that are, should appropriately be charged here but aren't being.
Okay. I imagine with changing conditions, we might want to revisit how we, where we allocate that. My time is limited, though, so I'm flagging it. Number two, is it possible to look at offering a contract or hourly option for our liaisons, given the recruitment issues?
I don't know if Sean wants to weigh in on that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Omeish. Would you repeat your question?
Okay, we're not taking my time for that. Okay, okay. Is it possible to look at an op, a contract option and an hourly option for family liaisons, given the recruitment challenges?
So we currently do have both options available. So we do have a number of apparently, or family liaison, sorry, that are on contract, and we do have others that are working hour.
But this money is hourly, right?
I, yes, I do believe that it's hourly. And it's my understanding that the folks in the Office of Professional Learning have worked to, and they may be better positioned to answer, answer your specific question. But they, they take that pot of money and couple it with existing hours. And so there may be situations where folks are on contracts and others where this money is specifically going to hourly folks. But they, they would be better positioned to identify how they, they've utilized those resources and activated those folks.
So we do use a formula to determine the number of hours that a family liaison is able to fulfill within a school. The ESER funding provides for additional hourly family liaisons. This year, we have been able to place a position, not a position, but hourly funds in each of our schools. So every school now has a family liaison. They might be hourly, they might be contracted. The contracted family liaisons typically are working in our schools with greater needs.
But it may be possible to do that with these funds, right?
Well, we have been able to accommodate all of our schools through the ESER funding. So in addition to adding positions or hourly parent, family liaisons to schools who did not have them in the past, we were able to increase the hours for other family liaisons in schools with demonstrated need.
Okay. I think if the recruitment challenges persist, we may want to consider the option expanding that. My final point, just because of time, can we, in the same way we did a one-to-one model with tutoring for academic needs, which you know I'm extremely thrilled about, can we also find room to do a one-to-one model on the wellness needs, whether that be like the telemental health piece we've been talking about? Can we put out an RFP for telemental health? I'm serious.
Well, we're laughing because we had this very discussion earlier this morning, and Dr. Brabran was asking some questions about that as well. So it's something that we could take another look at. But, you know, honestly, the costs to provide hourly tele, you know, health services, I think is going to be too great. But it is something that we did discuss this morning. We need to have further discussion on it. It is something that we could look at.
Maybe an RFP? All right, thank you.
Dr. Anderson followed by Ms. Cohen.
Sorry, quick minute. I just want to piggyback a little bit on the carryover funds. I think I'm a little bit stuck because the SIP plans are annual, but yet we are allowing the carrying, the carryover because they're committed funds? How can they be committed if they're standing over every year?
So what we're contemplating doing right now is whatever funds schools have at the end of this year, they would be able to carry those funds over into next school year. They're committed, those funds are committed because schools have developed a very detailed budget, down really to the penny, that talks about how they're going to spend their money based on their planned activities. So when Ms. Corbett-Sanders was talking about it, you know, if you look at it from a private sector, you know, framework, those funds are committed to those activities. And we believe that since we're going to change the funding formula, and funding will shift in the future, and schools have already committed those funds and planned activities, that we should allow schools to carry over those funds to support the continuation of those activities, much of which happens or, much of which might happen during the summer.
Okay, I'm going to follow up because I'm short on time with you at another point. Going to the tutoring, just excited as at everybody else, but I wanted to figure out, is this like live? Or is this, can you give a few more details before I celebrate?
Yeah, live tutoring, yes, live, virtual tutoring.
Okay, so there'll be a person at the other end?
Dr. Anderson.
I'm just thinking, is it asynchronous? I don't, I don't want to.
No, no, no. It's live tutoring.
Talk my chickens.
Dr. Anderson, could I just real, super quick, because I know 30 seconds. The difference is, we're still doing traditional carryover for our operating funds that start at the beginning of the year through the entire year. The truth is, implementation of our plans came late this year, and we're trying not to take those funds that they committed based on plans from them for the end of this year, so that they keep going through the summer, through the beginning of through the beginning of the year, they're ready to go. That's why we did carryover a little bit different for these ESER funds than our traditional operating funds.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I noticed in one of the slides, one of the activities was time for teacher collaboration. How is that happening, given the sub shortage and there's so few opportunities?
Yeah, outside of the contract, the regular contract day.
Thank you. You also mentioned that there was an executive summary of the plans that were posted, and now there'll be the full plans. Can you explain a little bit in terms of the delay? Why not just have the full plans posted instead of the summary?
Well, originally, we had contemplated posting the summaries because that's what we've always done traditionally, is we posted the summaries. There was a request, obviously, from, you know, some individuals in the community and then from the board to try to post the entire plans. So now, you know, obviously, we're doing that and we're happy to do that, but there is a significant amount of work involved with actually posting them in a way that's ADA compliant. So that's why it's going to take a little bit longer to get those up.
All right, thank you. I do want to say, from watching the video that you played earlier, I did appreciate the immediate dip-sticking that those teachers who are engaging intervention were doing, because one of the things I always worry about is that we throw intervention at the wall and then we don't evaluate its impact. So that was very good to hear. And same thing with all of the hands-on and the growth mindset work of CalDwac that those kids, that's how we're going to build resilience. So I just wanted to throw kudos in there, in addition to all my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, getting back to the conversation about what you said about being able to offer these opportunities. I wondered about the availability. We know that we have an SOQ issue with the staffing formula that we, this year, HR took the brunt of our high schools in particular that have teachers that have more than 150 students on their schedule. And principals are really concerned about if that comes back to them, then they're just not going to be able to offer a lot of opportunities, in particular, new, or newer programs. So I wondered if you could speak to the possibility of like, what are we doing to help with that?
Well, that might be an offline conversation a little bit, but what I would say was with respect to ESER funding, there are very clear guidelines about how we need to spend those funds, and it's to target support services to students. So we would not want to supplant any, you know, operating obligations to fund programs or classes or class size with ESER funds. So we just need to be really careful about that. But I don't know if Sean or Dr. Brabran have any other thoughts on your larger question of the class load concerns.
I would defer to Sean right now, and perhaps some of it is offline. I'd have to, I'll defer to Sean. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that we are pulling back together a work group with principals, both high school and middle school principals. And actually, the first meeting is tomorrow. So we'll be discussing the existing structure and guidelines and looking to make any necessary changes to better align with their thinking and ensuring we continue to comply with the state's fairness equality.
And, Mr. McDonald, I correct that those meetings and discussions will be had before staffing and master schedules are made so that everyone knows exactly what the rules are and what flexibility they have?
That's correct.
Yeah, I guess, you know, you'd probably get several of us around the table arguing that $9 million on cybersecurity is definitely operational versus making sure that we can keep classes going. And to Ms. Maron's point, class size is manageable. The other question you referenced, that you're seeing fewer referrals for behavior, and I definitely, that is not what I'm hearing on the ground, so I wondered if somebody could speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, just briefly, I would say, you know, my reference was to the very low size of less than 1% on those charts we looked at. When we've looked at our overall behavioral data, referrals are lower than they've been in previous non-pandemic years when we've been in person. But that doesn't mean that the intensity of what's happening isn't higher than it's been in pre-pandemic years. It just means that those referrals aren't always happening. The teachers are having to do a lot of classroom management and a lot of teaching of effective behaviors before they would move towards a referral. And I think that's the part that's been truly just exhausting to our teachers, is how much they've had to do with teaching of, you know, appropriate classroom and school behaviors. And that's not represented in that, in that dataset, but we know it's real.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. I share your comments and concerns regarding that. Ms. Seizmarheiser?
Thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to mention a couple of things. I've also heard from parents who are talking about, as my colleagues have shared, of hiring outside tutors. I wanted to ask, as we're getting this RFP put together, what tier-two and tier-three identification of students and supports have been happening at our schools? And what outreach has been done to parents to sort of say, if you're seeing issues, how, how to bring that into the school to get the interventions that we have available now?
Well, we have decision rules to identify students for academic and behavior needs that we're using consistently across the division. In terms of the parent communication piece, I think that's a big theme from today's discussion, that we need to do a better job collectively, helping parents understand how they can access services. Again, I don't want to give the impression that we haven't done any of that because many schools have, have worked at that quite hard. They've had, you know, again, parent information sessions and opportunities to connect with parents multiple times throughout the year, but we need to do a better job with it, I think, is what we're hearing here today. So that's something we'll take back and discuss as a leadership team.
Great, and I also wanted to mention, there was a footnote in one of the reports that talked about when you looked at academic needs, there was multiple things, SOL scores, standard scores, IEP goals. If you could elaborate a little bit about how IEP goals are used to determine that needs-based funding?
So IEP goals weren't used to determine needs-based funding. IEP goals are one, well, for the funding, we use the percent of students who have IEPs within a school, but the goals weren't associated with the funding. Progress on our outcome measures in terms of the effectiveness that ORSE will look at of the services and supports that students are receiving, we're looking not just at those standardized assessments, but also looking at IEP goals. And I don't know, I mean, we're still working on finalizing that growth methodology that we'll use for the accountability reporting.
Great, I would just recommend looking at goals pre and post-pandemic to see if those goals changed at all, not just looking at the goals current year, IEPs.
Oh, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. And then one last question, I think, for the messaging on SEL, really tying it well to those portrait of graduate goals and the things that our employers and colleges say you take to be successful post-secondary. I think that's a really important piece that may not get out as much in the messaging.
Ellen's writing that in her notes right now. We're on it.
No, let me just speak to that real quick. I've walked away, getting a chance to get out of Fairfax County and go to a national conference and hear some of these discussions. This is doubling down about life skills for our kids, career skills for our kids, and you have to have the EQ and the IQ to be successful, period. And it's, that's simpler, easier to understand, and it reflects the work we're actually doing with kids. So we're going to communicate that much more strongly. Ms. Cohen, I want to just real quick say something. It sounds counterintuitive, but this is my head and I just want to share it. The exposure around social-emotional behaviors is higher than ever, but our teachers are going really, and this is why the referrals are down, they're going extra levels to try not to make those referrals to the office because there are so many kids that have different behavior issues being displayed. So we know there's still more work to do. It maybe seems counterintuitive, but I think everyone's awareness around behavior is up. And yes, there, there are significant behaviors that we still need to deal with in our schools, and we're working hard to do it.
Ms. McLaughlin followed by Ms. Pikarski.
Great, thank you. I just, I do want to emphasize something that Ms. Kies-Gamara said about engaging our community in the process. I did have some emails where people wrote and said that the feedback form didn't make any sense to me, to them, because they hadn't really had access to be able to read and understand the report. So, you know, Dr. Brabran, the feeling was just, we're asking them to check a box, but not because they'd actually be able to give meaningful feedback. So I do think we'll need to look at that a little more closely. And then I had two questions. One is, I think it's in the narrative report number five, on equity PD for school teams. It looks like it's about $2.3 million over several years. So I'd like to understand a little bit more. Who's, who's delivering that PD and how's that being done?
Well, I see Ms. Walts is coming over, so she'll help us with that one.
So the equity PD is to provide a deeper dive into the work of equity.
Sorry, Ms. Walts, just because I know it's time. I, I totally appreciate the write-up there. I'm just trying to understand how we're actually spending the money. Like, who's, who's, are we using outside consultants? Or is this all being done in-house?
It's all, it's all in-house PD, and the funding is to be used during the summer to bring school teams together for that deep dive.
So this is just to compensate people?
It is to provide hourly funding for teachers to participate in the professional development.
Right, so we're, we're asking them to come in on their personal time and we're going to pay them for that. And so how many people are we going to reach through this? Like, what's the, like, I will just say, I just think that, yeah. It's, I totally hear you, Ms. Omeish. It's just frustrating when we ask a question and it's like, I've got to ask five questions in order to get it answered.
I'm going to ask for greater detail to be provided as one of our next steps.
Perfect, thank you.
If you could go ahead and put in the next steps document of the level of detail, that'd be great. Ms. Pikarski?
Thanks, I was too generous giving you my time last time. I had two more questions. One was about the bus drivers and the stipends that will stop after this year, but we still have, you know, hiring issues. And so what is the thinking behind that rationale, please?
Well, I'd invite either Sean or Dr. Brabran maybe to weigh in on that.
I was reading an email that the Division Council was sending me around a topic that just came up from the board. My apologies, I'm sorry if you could restate that.
Okay, don't take my time. The rationale behind the bus driver stipends and those only being, money being allocated through this year, when we still have problems?
Yeah, I mean, there are some things here with ESER. I mean, we're doing school revisions over the next month or two. We need to look at some of the division pieces, and I'm, I'm just not there yet to make a decision. But we do have flexibility to resubmit funds and amendments to you. I think it's over $100,000, of which bus stipends would be. I just haven't made any final decisions yet. But certainly, those are the kind of things. I think that's where Ms. Omeish and some other board members were mistold. And hey, you're zero here, you're high here. We do need to look at where we are in just a few months to make some decisions about what our ESER division-wide might look like for next year.
Okay, that's great, and I definitely think this is one where we're going to have to do that. There's no way around that, at least the way I understand it. The other one was about the monitors. Again, money that stops this year. The feedback that I've gotten from schools is these have been extremely helpful to doing a lot of the things and dealing with it. So I see you have an answer.
Well, I have a answer, and Dr. Presidio and others may have one. One thing that we're going to be talking about, we're talking about this afternoon, you all have a chance to approve the budget. I'm hoping that we do an omnibus on Thursday around several topics that the board's interested. And one of them that I had shared at the last work session on the budget was elementary planning time. We have a proposal from elementary principals that would allow us to keep some of these monitors, expand and get some more. And they would be able to provide not only some of the stuff they've been doing, but add elementary planning time equal to that of middle and high, which would be equal to one of the three days in the budget for additional professional development. So trimming that from three days to two would allow us to actually do that proposal. But be glad to talk about it in the months ahead as we're looking at the budget before final adoption in May.
Okay, great. Thank you for sharing that. That's good news, and we want to keep these people. And as our teachers are making decisions for next year, that sneak peek, I think, is, is good to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pikarski. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I want to talk about our communication around SEL and not from the perspective of like, what are we hearing from, you know, internet conspiracy theorists? But more around the actual community that we should be worried about is what do parents think about SEL? Because this is not just new to FCPS, it's new to them as well. And so we are at a critical moment where we can shape the way that parents think about this going forward. And my worry is that people will see this like they see other things that are measured in school as a defined endpoint or objective to be reached instead of a continuum of, of ongoing growth. How do we make sure, in the way that we communicate not only the broader SEL framework, but also how students are doing individually, that that is, that, that parents internalize that way of thinking about it instead of, you know, your As, your Bs, your Cs, your Ds? That they think of it as portrait of a graduate skills, but more specifically as defined by what they're seeing in the behavior? It's what, you know, I don't think parents, you know, the parents I talk to don't think of their kids as like, my child is demonstrating portrait of graduate skills and I'm very proud of them. That's how we think about our students. They just think about their kids. So how are we expressing to them the things they should be looking for and the ways that they can help their kids continue to grow?
Well, just briefly, I would say, what a, what a great question. I'd love to have further conversation about that. We have some ideas about how to do that. One of the ideas that we were really working on pre-pandemic was this idea of like student reflection on their growth, right? Like, and we have a whole like project around that called our Presentations of Learning, where students actually reflect on their academic learning, their growth towards portrait of a graduate skills, give presentations to classmates, to family members about that. So we have a lot of ideas about how to do that. We just need to be able to get back to that after we work our way out of the pandemic. So love to have more conversation about it, and definitely, we're going to write that down as part of how we need to measure and talk about social-emotional learning in a, in a different way, in a better way.
And Carl, real quick, the video gave us a snippet. That child went to adding one word, "yet." I'm not there yet. I haven't got that skill yet. It's adding one word, in some cases, to our kid's vocabulary around their own sense of a growth mindset instead of a fixed mindset. We've got to help communicate that to parents about how you're talking to your kid. It's not about a A or F, it's about how you get there yet. And I, I think that's part of what we have to do in the pandemic, is give our kids a little bit more, a doubling down of the growth mindset is how we are going to get ourselves out of closing these learning gaps for kids and getting our parents to feel we are making progress on a number of fronts with their child, even if, even if it feels in this moment. I want that, I want that gap closed now, this week, this month. So.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. That was a wonderful way of having the last word. We have gone through everybody's second turn that indicated they wanted one. I can tell that everybody would like to have had another hour, at least on this conversation, because this really is kind of the mosaic of everything that we're dealing with, from the financial piece of how do we invest? How do we staff? How do we have the academic adjustments we need? And how do we have the social-emotional learning? So Elaine has taken significant notes today, but I also encourage each and every one of my colleagues to put in their next steps in the next steps document. And I am sure that we will have a subsequent deeper dive on the next tranche of, or new modifications to the ESER plans. And with that, we are going to take a half-hour break for lunch. We will reconvene at 2:20, so you actually get 32 minutes for lunch. And appreciate it, thank you.